Good morning, everyone. And the board did meet and closed session. We apologize for the tardy start of this open session meeting, but we had some very important pending litigation that we needed to discuss. I'm going to go to public comment and see if there's anybody from the public that would like to address the board at this time. Okay, seeing no one, we'll move on to item 6.01. This is a resolution number 042122, authorizing use of remote teleconferencing provisions pursuant to AB 361 and government code 54953. This, we have our attorney, Mr. Whiteside here from Zono Smith, who I think can explain what this resolution is about, and we'll go forward on that. Josh, would you like to go ahead and talk to us about this, please?
Sure. So, good morning, board. This morning, this resolution is being put before you because Governor Newsom relaxed Brown Act provisions since March 2020, allowing public agencies to meet remotely. But that power or that authority to meet remotely went away as of September 30th, 2021. So Assembly Bill 361 is designed to replace essentially those relaxed restrictions and replace them with the, this process of essentially making findings that are still necessary to conduct remote meetings. Now, the remote meetings under AB 361 do require that there be a proclaimed state of emergency, such as the one that is still in effect currently as pronounced by Governor Newsom, related to COVID. And so it's an emergency measure. It went effective immediately upon being signed and upon the governor signing an executive order clarifying that they became effective October 1st. And this Assembly Bill and this sort of process of making these findings will apply until January 1st, 2024. So it will be for about three years and some change, something that will be what you have to go through. And so in order to make, to be able to have these remote meetings, you have to make a finding that either that there is a local or state order that has imposed or recommended measures to promote social distancing, or two, that the, as a result of the emergency, meeting in person would present imminent risk to health or safety of the attendees. And then the third option would be that you're deciding at that meeting that it would present an imminent risk to the health and safety of attendees, rather than meeting before and making that determination before the meeting where you would have the remote meeting. So in other words, there's really two items that you have to consider, whether there's a social distancing measure in place or recommended, or whether there's an imminent risk to health and safety of attendees to meet in person. So this resolution before you is designed to address those issues and to put that forth, that this is something that the board is interested in doing. If the board does not want to go forward with this resolution, such as they don't believe that there's an imminent risk to the health and safety of attendees to require remote meetings, then we would resort back to our original Brown Act teleconferencing rules, which would require the agenda posted at the location and the ability for the public to comment at that location. Yes, Eve?
Well, in regard to the second one, the imminent risk to the health of the attendees, if there were no imminent risk to our health, then there would be no need for the mandates to the students and the staff to be vaccinated and wear masks. So there, it seems like de facto, there is an imminent risk to health that we're all operating on. So that finding is in place, is it not?
It's a finding that the board has to make. So the board would have to decide that meeting, at a board meeting, would cause, in person, would be an imminent risk to the health and safety of the attendees. So that's something that the board has to decide if that's the case or not.
Okay, well, yeah.
And I would just, I would remind everyone that, that this, that AB 361 requires, we have this finding monthly, is that not correct, Josh?
It is, although when you make the monthly determination, the requisite analysis changes, unfortunately. And so you would have to figure out, you would have to decide on reconsideration every 30 days if the state of emergency continues to impact the ability of the board members to meet safely in person. So you would have to be looking at the board members rather than the attendees as a whole on that reconsideration. Otherwise, you would have to restart this AB 361 process all over again.
And my understanding is that we will not need to make a resolution each time, that we'll just really need to make a finding of this monthly to continue to have the meetings in the manner that we're having them, right, Josh?
That is correct. Our firm is recommending that you put this in resolution format.
For now, for this initial one or for all subsequent ones?
For this initial one, and we also recommend it for at least the first reconsideration, and then you can renew that reconsideration by action.
Mark? Mark, you're muted. You're showing, Mark, you're showing mute on, there you go.
Thanks, I appreciate it. Chris used the term monthly and Josh used the term every 30 days. So just a clarification on that, my understanding is every 30 days. Josh, yeah, okay.
That is correct.
And then CSBA just sent out this morning, you probably wrote it, Josh, but, "Boards must adopt a resolution, therefore subsequent, where the subsequent resolutions are required every 30 days." Though I appreciate your comment that we would want to do a resolution every 30 days as opposed to some kind of discontinuance. Am I correct?
Yeah, I believe there was actually a edit that CSBA sent out last night, clarifying that the resolution was not needed, that it could be done by action. However, our firm is recommending a resolution for the initial application of AB 361 and at least the first reconsideration.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from board members, Eve? And now I'll go to the public.
I think, Josh, you were making a distinction between the risk of health of the board members versus the risk of health of the students and the staff and the rest of the school. Is that, are we not all one entity? Because I think I heard that you said the law makes the distinction of, that it's a risk of health to the governance of the board members, just to the board members, something like that.
Right, so Assembly Bill 361, if you're utilizing that to have a remote board meeting, it is only looking at the health and safety of attendees at the board meeting, not at school generally. And so that is the initial consideration that has to be made. The initial finding that has to be made is based on the health or safety of the attendees. On reconsideration, when you're going to renew this ability to do a remote meeting, where you're only looking at the safety of the board members to make that reconsideration.
And a follow-up question would be, I know this is not your place to answer, but what would be the need for the government to decide whether the board can meet virtually or in person when it's such a convenient option? If you, you know, want to be virtual sometime and want to be in person and might have good reasons also for that? So it's not up to you, I realize that, but what?
So the original Brown Act statutes that are in place right now, and basically before this pandemic, require that there be a majority of the board that meets in person in the location of the jurisdiction of the district. If there are other members that want to teleconference in, either virtually or over the phone, in the past, under the Brown Act, they had to post the agenda outside of that location where they're teleconferencing in from and allow public comment at that location. So this AB 361 allows for those two items, those two, you know, main stumbling blocks, if you will, or obstacles to holding those virtual meetings at a teleconference location. It removes those if you can make these findings.
But Josh, I just, for the public that's listening, this does not, in any way, shape, or form, truncate the ability of the public to provide public comment to us because it actually kind of opens things up and allows the public to make comment through Zoom and things like that, is that not correct?
That's correct. So Assembly Bill 361 requires that the agenda describe how the public may access the meeting and offer public comment, including the ability to do so either via call-in option or an internet-based option such as Zoom, like we're doing today.
Uh, Eve?
Yeah, did, maybe I missed it? But if, if the board, let's say, we don't make the resolution. I personally would hope we do make a resolution that we can continue it, but that we don't, and we have to all meet in person or not meet at all. But does that go to the public at all? That they need to come in person or not come at all, or what?
So if we were, essentially, if there's not an Assembly Bill 361 resolution that has passed, boards should meet like they were previous to the pandemic. If that, if that action is not, if those findings aren't met, it should be a normal pre-COVID board meeting setup. That does not preclude the district from being able to stream its board meetings, but it may mean that the district has to do additional measures to, if it wants to do Zoom meetings where the public can come in through Zoom, there may be some questions under the law as to whether or not that is permissible without this Assembly Bill 361.
I'm not seeing any other, not seeing any other questions from board members, so I'll go to the public. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address the board on this resolution? And I'm seeing no one. Mr. Krill? Sorry, what?
Mr. Krill just put his hand up.
Oh, okay. So someone did put their hand up, I'm sorry?
So I am Krill.
Oh, Mr. Krill, do you want to go ahead? And can be, I'm not seeing the clock. I'm going to set, hold on, Brian, I'm going to set my watch for three minutes and we'll go from there. Okay, Brian, are you ready?
I am.
Okay, why don't you begin now?
So I just, I just wanted to make a comment in that, as I'm representing 50% of the public, I think, right now. So if Lena agrees, the whole public agrees. But this has been, this forum has been really helpful. So being able to work and attend simultaneously. So, and I know that with people, especially things that happen after, after hours, being able to take care of family and also attend, there have been some hot-button topics where more people have attended than not. But if there's a way to continue this forum post-pandemic, I know that a number of people, at least two people here, would be very appreciative of it, so that's all.
Thank you, Brian.
Thanks.
Is there anybody else, is there anybody else from the public, Lena, that would like to address us on this? Okay, I'm going to close the public comment, oh, wait. Okay, I'm going to close the public comment on this and I'm going to bring it back to the board. Is there any further board discussion on this item? Ellen?
I was just going, if there's no further discussion, I would move to adopt resolution 042122, authorizing use of remote teleconferencing provisions pursuant to AB 361, government code section 54953.
So we have a motion and a second by Dr. Isaac Roth Rogers. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. Hold on just a second, I want to write this down. Okay, Eve?
Yes?
Ellen? Ellen, I think I lost you for a second. I'll come back to you. Mark?
Yes?
Marilyn?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
And I guess, the motion carries 7-0. Thank you very much. Thank you, Josh. Okay, we'll go to item 6.02, the facility master plan update, and that would be Ryan.
Yeah, so I'm going to pull it up. So just so for the board to know, this is, and again, as Mr. Buckman pointed out, we probably should have drafts, you know, ingrained on every single page of this, right? Because it's definitely still in the preliminary stages of putting it together. And so, but I'd like to just give the board just a quick backdrop about, you know, the facility master plan, why we're doing those types of things. And then Gary and Aaron, so Gary, Gary, Gary is from P K Architects, along with Aaron Boyd, who are here, who are doing the facility master plan. And so my hope would be that Gary and Aaron, and you can take your mask off as you speak as you go through it, it helps, we'll kind of talk about what went into making the plan. You'll see as you go through it now, you know, there's still a lot of information that still needs to be adjusted, fixed, you know, a principal's name wrong, or we just got the enrollment information from our demographer who's doing that. So all of that information will be put in. We do have our ed specifications, which kind of outline what would the ideal campus have? Whether it be the, you know, gym space, the size of a classroom, the size of the science room, the size of cafeteria, you know, all of those things for elementary, middle, and high school. And we have it, so that will be included. But really, the purpose of today was I wanted to share the site plans with the board. I wanted to make sure that when we look at the actual school sites, that, you know, this facility master plan is going in the right direction. And if there's anything in any of the sites that you, hey, no, absolutely not, then, you know, we need to make sure that Gary knows that and that we're, you know, we make those adjustments, those changes, before we bring more of a final draft to the board as we move forward. But my hope would be that we would bring this back to a couple of things. So, you know, make the adjustments that we find today, you know, add the enrollment information, add the specs, and then again, add more budget information and get your input again, and then, you know, finally have kind of a draft that we feel good about posting on the website and having it. So we actually did our first facility master plan back in 2014, prior to Measure D. At that time, you know, post-Measure A, right, in the 90s, a lot of work done in elementary and middle schools. But, you know, what came out of that was really this, you know, again, huge need. I think at the time, it was $350 to $400 million worth of potential need. And so then we have a financial advisor, John Isom, goes out, right? We did a survey with the public, what are they willing to, you know, pay to move forward with? And so that came out to a $177 million bond measure, which basically was prioritized by the board for San Luis Obispo High and More Bay High School. That's where predominantly most of the funds went. And we've done projects throughout all of our campuses as well, as part of that Measure D. And been fortunate enough to supplement that with some state grants and some E-funds, right, to help us grow that to over $200 million long-term. As we move forward, as Measure D is kind of nearing completion in the next couple of years, and the high schools are looking great and getting most of the projects done at our sites, there was definitely, you know, the need to look at the rest of our campuses. So in particular, elementary schools or middle schools, and really our surplus sites. I wanted the board to get an idea of what would the cost be to continue to maintain those sites and have them, you know, if we wanted to modernize them and move forward into the future. So all of this facility master plan, the purpose of it is really just to give you a concept, a concept of what that is. So we're going to look at some concepts of each of the school sites today, our possibilities. And so you'll see, you know, Baywood Elementary School, we're looking at potentially building an entire new campus on the backside, instead of modernizing the one that's currently there. And we'll go into that. If that's okay, if we want to move forward, there's various options, right? We can have an option to modernize her building or build a new school. But I want the board to note that this is just kind of a concept plan. Should we move forward? Should we get a financial advisor? Should we do a survey? Should the board move forward with another school bond measure? Should that measure be passed by the public, with support in? We would then, basically with those funds, do a whole prioritization again. We would have to look at what projects we're really going to do. You know, are we going to do modulars? Are we going to modernize? Are we going to do stick-built building? I mean, there's so much more that would happen in the future. But it's really important to have this facility master plan to give us a starting point, right? To be able to show the public that there is a need, right? That there, you know, and that the school district doesn't have, in this case, potentially $423 million on the low end estimate, which we'll discuss, to move forward, right? That doesn't come in our general fund. And so there's a reason why there are school bonds and why that's the means for school districts to move forward. So just conceptually, that's kind of the big picture, right? And so we, we'll, I'll go through this today, but really I want to focus on the site plans, if that's okay. I don't want to get too into the weeds and too, you know, the median income and, you know, what people make in San Luis County and those types of things. Although the board can do whatever you'd like, if you'd like to, we can move into those. But, but really, I think the thing that's going to be most helpful for us today is to really look at those site plans. Make sure that you're okay with, you know, the board in general's okay with kind of the concepts we're headed, and then we'll move forward. Eve?
Oh, I didn't have it.
Or Ellen, excuse me, sorry, Ellen. I was looking at Eve's name and called.
It's okay.
Sorry.
Just call me Eve, it's good. I just had a quick question about the enrollment data that you said is coming from the demographers.
Yes.
Will, will that include, and I'm just thinking very broadly, I know that's, you know, a concept, will it include kind of, you know, the, you know, birth rate? Will it include enrollment at, you know, current enrollment at private schools and charter schools and transfers that, you know, either in or out of the district, kind of over a period of time to give us a historical perspective on this enrollment?
It will include birth rates, it will include development, it will include all those types of things. Charter school, private school, probably not. I don't know that they have a way to get that particular data, but it will look at previous history of enrollment and, you know, and they do make projections into the future, so we'll have a lot of that information.
Yeah, the only reason I was asking is because, just looking at, it's been kind of a wonky year, but people who leave and who are coming, you know, there's a lot of movement. And so I'm just, you know, being able to somehow incorporate that as we move forward, that's kind of really what I'm looking for. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Buckman? Mark?
Okay, thanks. I'm trying not to have the cat crying in the background, so that's why I'm on mute. Ryan, just a quick question, in the, it talks about making decisions based on enrollment and specifications. And there's a lot of, not decisions, but a lot of moving things around and the things that you're looking for approval. So as we give that approval, but the enrollment comes in and the specifications, the space between districts, the number of classes, the number of desks, that kind of stuff, the space between students and the number of desks, is that, could that possibly change? What's being proposed here?
I mean, I would say the specs are kind of a, again, it's, that's an ideal that we would like to shoot for, whether, you know, whether every school has the same size multipurpose room or office building or, you know, every science classroom is the same space, right? It definitely change, you know, it can vary by site. And honestly, what we're seeing, and what I think we're going to get from the enrollment report is pretty stable growth, just flat, flat growth. And that's what we're seeing right now. The only, you know, really potentially even decline at some of our elementary schools a little bit, but I think for the most part, it's going to be pretty flat growth. But we will discuss, if there is growth, where would that be? So what I would tell you is just from an enrollment standpoint, there is room at Delmar Elementary School to add portables for growth if we needed to. There is room at Modern Grove Elementary School to add portables or classroom buildings. And then we'll also talk about the potential of the Teach Campus, I think is probably our, you know, area or school site within, within the San Luis, you know, city area where we could grow students if we needed to.
Chris, I have, can I continue or is there someone else?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thanks. And then, could you just review for me again, after a few meetings, after the board looks at this, after we get to ask our questions, what's the next step then for staff?
Well, really, it's going to be, you know, it's a document that we share. I think our goal, you know, to, I mean, really, it's, how do we want to move forward as a school district, right? And so how do we want to potentially do some of the work that's included in this facility master plan? So next step would probably be to hire a financial advisor. Mr. Isom did that role before. Financial advisors are free to the district, they don't cost us anything unless you pass a bond measure and you sell bonds. So that's kind of how it works. And the next step would be really to survey the public. So ask the board to go forward with the survey to see, you know, are people willing, based on, you know, the information of the needs in the school district in particular, I would say the elementary, middle schools. And that includes everything from infrastructure to safety to, you know, that you're going to see, you know, we have buildings that are 1950s, 60s, right, that are 70 years old, that it's probably time for some modernization. And then part of that survey also is what are they willing to, what are they willing to support? $10 per 100,000, 49, like, you know, it can vary, right? So then all of that information comes back to the board to decide whether or not we want to move forward with another bond measure in the future, whatever that may be.
And one last question. There's a, there's a, there's a lot of money being discussed at the federal level, and I don't, I don't know specifically whether that's going to include school construction costs. So I guess we're just going to move forward with this, but if we get that money, it might offset or change things.
It could assist. I think what you'll find is that even, even at the top end of what we can ask voters, is far less than what the needs are that are going to be outlined in this plan.
One question.
Ellen?
Yeah, I'm sorry. When you're looking at that enrollment, what, how far out will that go? That, is it, you know, five, 10 years, 15, I mean, just?
Throw me 10.
Okay.
But I'll share it with the board. I literally just came Tuesday.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we'll get that. And so we utilize that information as well when we're looking at trying to get state matching modernization funds, you know, those types of things. That's, that's part of the reason why we do that. So, so kind of, again, the big picture, I'm just going to, I want to, if it's okay, just kind of shoot through this beginning phases, right, just general information about the school district table of contents, you know, the executive summary, and, you know, San Luis Coastal, right? So, you know, talk a little bit, Gary, just about your insights on why we do facility master plans. I think that would be good for me here.
Sure. There's a lot of, there's a lot of really good reasons to do facility master plans, having, you know, worked on schools for 30 years or more. It's amazing how many campuses I go to and see things where they put buildings, put portables, and they make absolutely no sense. They create, whether it's visibility issues or create a situation where when we really have to do another project now, we can't really put it in the right spot because bad decisions have been made along the, along the way because we needed a portable or whatever it is. So it's really trying to provide a plan on how to deal with needs at the campus long-term. We're not just looking, you know, immediate needs. I mean, we are trying to think, you know, 15, 20 years down, down the stream. You know, will we need to replace portables? You know, obviously, they don't have a long life. So now, in doing a new plan, it's a great opportunity to So now in doing a new plan, it's a great opportunity to do a, whether it's a stick-built classroom, a modular classroom, and put it in a good location, right? That, you know, works with the rest of the campus, that is integrated in the campus. So it is really then also looking at the maintenance, the ages of the buildings and what things are needed to, you know, bring them up to ADA, to deal with ongoing maintenance repair issues that need to be integrated into the campuses. So it's all of those components that we then can lay out in a plan for each of the individual sites so that we know, okay, the most immediate need at this campus is, you know, we've got leaky roofs or, you know, leaky windows or the restrooms, none of them are ADA accessible. And these are really things we need to do and we need to do them immediately. And kind of create that timeline and priorities, which is not yet in here. That's another thing that we still need to do as we finalize. This is what's the higher priority project that we really want to do immediately? And probably when this is said and done, priority one and twos will end up being the ones that, you know, might get done out of the lot. So that's really why we do them. They provide the roadmap then for the district moving forward for each of their sites and gives you some good data on what you've got on all of the sites as well as, you know, some realistic numbers on what is all this gonna cost?
Yeah. Just a question on the bonds. In general, what is the success rate of a bond passing? Just not specific one in our district, but just in general, when school bonds go out, what is the percentage of?
I mean, they've been running in the, had been running in the neighborhood of about 80%.
80% is what I would say.
The last election cycle that they were in was, we think, an anomaly just because of COVID and everything that was going on. And I think the, it was closer to 65 or something, I think, on the last round. But they generally be running 80 to 85% approvals.
Thank you. So, so this process started with Gary and the staff. Oh, so go ahead, Mark, sorry.
I believe also for state funding, CDE, California Department of Education, strongly suggests that you do a facility master plan. So they, before they funded, they want to know that you've studied your circumstance, looked long-term, short-term, and made wise decisions.
So this process started with Gary and the staff walking every single inch of every campus with our staff. So really, you know, which is key, right? Because our staff, we know, like, where to look, what the issues are, those problems, the roofs, what's been done, what hasn't, right? So between Rick Simpson, Chris Bonin, you know, Gary, that five or six staff member literally walking, taking pictures of every area, every inch of every campus. And so some of the things that they're looking for are outlined here on this page, right? And again, everything from is there asbestos in the building? What are the fire, life and safety concerns? Again, ADA access compliance, right? Roofs, exterior walls, restrooms, I mean, it goes on and on in terms of the different things. And you'll see that each school has a chart of each of these different items. And then they've given kind of a one, two, three or four. One being, hey, it's a good shape. Brand-new building, student services building at San Luis Municipal High School, one. Right? You know, the classrooms at the Chaco Elementary School that are from 1958, those are four. Right? So you'll see that prioritization in terms of the needs as we go through it. Talk about how you came up with the numbers, budgetarily.
So the numbers, which are still being fine-tuned, we have used a number of items to calculate them. One is historical current costs that we are experiencing on projects. We have a pretty good internal database of that, so that is helping us to inform costs. And then we're using a couple of cost estimating votes, one of which is the one required by OPSC for us to use on modernization projects and grant applications. So between those, really, we are, we develop the costs based on our walk, our knowledge of the site, square footage quantities and what needs to happen with cost per square foot or cost per item.
And then there's also an escalation factor built in.
Right, so inside, so we start with a construction hard cost. We then have a contingency amount that we put on it. There's then an escalation factor, and that will change these numbers because right now, they're all escalated to what we call priority one level, which is kind of the immediate next one to three years. So they don't have a lot of escalation built in yet, but some of the projects will be slipping back further. And so they'll gain more costs on them with escalation. And then at the end of these, you know, numbers, we have all the soft costs, right? You've got all the fees, DSA, architectural engineering surveying, SEQA, on and on. Those fees are also included. So at the end, the number is a total project cost.
And so as we go through these numbers, as we look at these plans, what I would tell the board is that this is on the low end. So like the, you know, some of the classroom buildings or adding buildings, like Bishop Peak that you'll see, the estimate includes modular buildings for those. The Baywood, you know, switching to campus has modular classrooms towards the back, right? So, and as you'll see from some pictures of Bellevue Santa Fe, that they can be beautiful classrooms, right? But stick builds is gonna be even more money than what even this overall $470 million is. So I just, I just want to make, you know, to understand what that, what that looks like in terms of from a budget standpoint, right?
I'm curious, Ryan.
Yeah.
So we're talking about half a billion dollars here.
Yes.
And I'm just, I was just wondering, do we have any idea what the total value of our, of our properties and infrastructure is?
We actually have an overall, like, through our insurance company, through CISC, that I can get, I can just, I can share. Yeah, I don't, I don't know how realist, how up-to-date or realistic it is, but they have, they have kind of an overall amount that each year we look at our facilities and what's there. You know, we have to make changes, you know, if buildings are modernized or new, then the value of them goes up, right? So that's a, it's an annual thing that we do. But off the cuff, I don't know exactly what it is.
Yeah, I know, and I, I know we have that, and I don't know what that number is. And I think the insurance number is really gonna be replacement value of, you know, the buildings. So it wouldn't even really take into account, I don't think, you know, the actual land. So that's a whole other entity from a cost perspective.
Well, it's also the, our buildings are single-use. So you can't compare them to an apartment complex because there's not other school districts out there trying to buy ours. So it's, you know, it's a very different look.
Private schools, but not, you know. And so, so I do want to point out, and, you know, Mark had shared this too, so we do have Bellevue Santa Fe as one of the facilities that's in our plan. But we didn't list it as a district school, so it's a little, you know, it's not really, it's, if it's charter school, right, but it is more of a school. So it's not listed as a district site, but it is actually in our facility master plan, which we will discuss. And so nicely, they're kind of mapped city, right? Again, some information about OCAP, but I want to jump down to Bishop's Peak. So again, this is what the district's wall projections will go in. And this has capacity analysis, so it'll, like, how, so it'll, it'll do Evelyn for your, like, kind of, what is the enrollment? And then there's also kind of one of the capacity of our classrooms of our schools as well, right? Because I know back in the day, it was, hey, it was told to the board, hey, we have the capacity of 600, 650 students per campus, right? And so that'll be, you know, part of this analysis as well. There's your 10-year enrollment projection, again, the specs we talked about. And so, again, we talked a little bit about this. And these are the different types of things that go in. So Gary, if you want to, you want to address those really quick? Just kind of what are the things, the few things we're looking at?
Yeah, so the, the main elements, when we did the walk to develop the costs and the projects that are needed, we look at all the civil, you know, which is all the site-related stuff, drainage, parking, sidewalks, all of the site utilities. So all those things are looked, looked at, and in some cases, like underground utilities, we've got engineers from the district to inform us as to whether there's some issues that need to be addressed. Plus, just in general, if you have a school that's 50 or 60 years old, you know you're going to have to deal with some underground infrastructure issues. Building envelope or things like the roof, gutters, the exterior walls, the finishes, whether they're leaking windows, doors, all those types of components. Then the architecture is generally, you know, interior finishes, floor, ceilings, walls, casework, even exterior paint. So it's really, you know, the kind of look of the school. Mechanical is HVAC units, ducting. Basically, plumbing is also included, which we have a separate category for plumbing. Electrical is all of the power, lighting, outlets, fire alarm type of stuff.
Does, does, excuse me, does electrical include possibly the conversion to more solar?
It would, it would fit within that category. Yes.
Thank you.
And then plumbing is obviously, you know, all fixtures, the plumbing lines internally and within the building, technology, you know, Wi-Fi, PA, internet, all that type of stuff. And then you've got safety and security, which is gonna look at things like fencing, cameras, securing, securing the campus, some signage, and then the ADA stuff, which is a pretty big deal from everything, from your parking to your path of travel from off-site, from the parking lot, through the campus, your restrooms, and anything and everything kind of ADA-related.
So we touched a little bit about how costs were developed already, right? So we'll, we'll come back to kind of, again, we're not gonna prioritize today. But this will be something that, again, we talked about in terms of the four, you know, one versus four, right? So if it's a one, it's made, we gotta get all this right now, these are things that need to be fixed. Versus a four is kind of a, it'd be nice to have this in the future.
Right.
And so we're almost there. We jump into our first school site, which is Baywood Elementary School. So, you know, Baywood's, Baywood's an interesting dynamic, right? And so we have gone in and we have done some things to help. But this facility, which was built in 1976, was, and we'll look at, you know, there's a map with kind of the dates on it. You know, kind of have this interior open feel, right? And so since then, with all the safety lockdowns, all the things that have happened, you know, that, that becomes almost kind of a problematic in terms of just interior classrooms. And it's something we hear all the time, you know, in terms of complaints about having interior classrooms and doors and those types of things. And, you know, in looking at this building as well, the architecture, and again, this is just me personally, you may, you know, think that it looks fantastic, but, you know, it has really short inside. When you walk inside, the ceilings are really short. The outside of the buildings, you know, even if we painted it, it did some things, it's just, I don't know how much we can, how much we can fix it up to make it look very, you know, modern in terms of moving on. Now that said, we could open this building up. We could put, you know, modernize the inside of it. And in the end, when we look at overall costs for the bond measure and how much money is there, our private kinds of funds, that may be what the, what the district wants to do. But I want you to kind of understand, and this is something well Gary can bring back too, is what would be the cost of modernizing this building versus just building another campus up on the, up on the back end, right? And seek comparison with the two.
Yeah, and we probably would do that, just so we can see.
Yeah.
So, Ryan, if we did that, are you talking about then it would be an entire new campus and demolishing?
Yes.
The existing building?
So we're gonna show you some, some plans of what that might look like as part of this master plan. So again, the first, so for each school, there's the current map. So this is currently how the site is being used, right? And there's a legend there of those, those aspects.
Right now, just because if you weren't so tall, then the ceilings might seem a little, you know.
Is it just me? Is it just me or is it, you know? It's, you know, and it's also the outside, like, when you walk around the building and you look at the outside architecture of those types of things, it's just, I don't know what, you know, whether it's the wood paneling on the top or what it is, but it's just a hard campus to try to, you know, make it more appealing, I guess, is, is part of the issue that I, you know, I see with it. But again, it's not, it can be done. It can be done. It can be modernized, can be moved forward, you know, in terms of those ways. So, so this is kind of, yeah, okay.
I have a quick question on that whole section there that has nothing on it. Why is that? Why is it, why everything was on?
So this, so the purpose of this map you're talking about?
Yes, exactly.
So, yeah, so the first one was kind of how it's used now. So each campus has this, how it's currently used. Then this map, which basically all this does is outline how old those buildings are.
Oh, right.
So, so the multipurpose room, multipurpose room was built in 1997, right, with Measure A. There's a couple of portables that are 1989. There are some additional portables that were added in 2008. And then the main building, the, the main building is 1975. So this is just kind of for the board to know, how old are these particular structures on the campus?
I'm just looking at the perimeter. So then I don't understand why there's, is that completely unused?
It's parking and fields.
Parking and fields.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, so this is the parking lot. This is the blacktop area currently, and these are the fields on the right hand.
I see parking lot, okay, okay.
So they just superimposed over like a, like a, the Google Earth shot, right? The campus itself. So it's, I think it's just good for, for the board and for the public to know, you know, at time, how old some of our buildings are, right? So in this case, you know, you're going on post of 50 years for the main building. So that, that's, you know, after 50 years, it's time for some modernization happen, right?
Ryan, you talked, you've talked about the, I'm not sure the term, the beauty of this school and whether we can make it more modern.
Aesthetics maybe, yeah.
Aesthetics, thank you. How many points should we think about awarding for that kind of a concept?
Aesthetics.
It's in the.
It's actually in there.
Yeah, I mean, it's in our evaluation criteria from.
Let me, let me be less, let me be, let me be less cute. I am not really interested in spending the taxpayers' money to make something look better. I'm much more interested in function and, and the amount of space that something goes. So just, just laying that out there.
Okay, agree. Ellen?
Yeah, and this is similar to what Mark was saying, but I'm, I'm gonna take a different tact on it. Because one of the things that I'm looking at, when you talked about, you know, Baywood or any of our schools, it's how they function as a learning environment. And so that's kind of been the complaint I've heard about, the learning and, you know, ability for a school with an open concept, given all that's, you know, new and things like that. So it's, it's not really just the aesthetics is, but it's the actual how it can function and can it function in the, in, in the current demands of a learning environment? And then secondly, I think for some of our school sites is, is climate factors. I know it was one of the considerations, like at Morro Bay High School with salt air and things like that, that we had to consider. And if we have, you know, wood on the coast and how that just is really problematic with, with, you know, climate conditions. And I think that's probably true for, for in-town, but it's just something to keep in mind.
Absolutely. Like air conditioning for the city of San Luis Obispo, because, you know, those types of things, yes. Eve?
In lieu of demolishing that main building from 1975, could we do some limited modernization of that open reception area and raising the ceiling, making that area look more modern? And that, you know, and just do it that way and save costs?
So again, this, there's two different options. One would be to modernize the current facility. And then the other would be to potentially build on the back end. And I think, you know, long-term, it would be up to the, so we can, and we can have that in this facility master plan.
Yeah.
We can have an option of just modernizing the current space, and this is what it'll cost. And versus, let's, you know, hey, let's look at a different option. I think for us, from what we've heard from the site, from what we heard from the staff, kind of, I guess, and I. I think for us, from what we've heard from the site, from what we've heard from the staff, kind of, I, I guess, and I probably misrepresented it. It's, it's less aesthetics than it is more the functionality of the, of the space that they complain a lot about in terms of the open classrooms, those types of things. Again, that said, it doesn't mean that it can't be fixed. But when you, when you modernize a current structure, you can only, you can only do so much, right, to that, to that structure itself in terms of, you know, the functionality or what it's going to be. So those would be different options that we, we, you know, the board could potentially look at.
I, I, I think as, from my, from what I look at too, as we start talking about these things, I think the importance of HVAC has been made very apparent during the campaign. And that is something that, you know, as I sort of think about Baywood, I know we're not going to have this discussion now, we're going to be talking, we'll have options. But I am concerned about the HVAC there and the ability for air exchange and things like that, right?
Right.
Really, Joe?
Yeah, I do. It, it, it sounds like we're talking about Baywood in terms of the open pod, the original
Yeah.
construction of Baywood. Subsequently, we have gone in with Measure D funds or
But you made this one up.
Whatever, whatever funding source we use, and we have created individual classrooms. So what we now have in terms of classrooms is, would you say it's comparable to what other elementary schools have?
I mean, it's, it's just different, right, because of the layout. So, and even though we've closed off the spaces, added doors, added windows to the halls, those types of things, it's still, you know, from an idealistic standpoint of educational spaces or whatever, do, would they like it to be different? I would say if you asked the staff, then yes, right? It doesn't mean that it's, it doesn't work, or that you can't have classes there, can't move forward, right? So it's just, it's just kind of choices.
So then I would ask Mr. Holcomb, with regard to the aesthetic concerns, and I, and I do share those, could those, would that be imperative? Could that be changed in some way to affect a more modern appearance?
Yeah, it, you know, it comes down to putting what it takes to fix the building from a spreadsheet and what it costs to replace the building. Uh, the individual classrooms, there's heating and air problems, you don't get good air filtration and exchange because of the way the original HVAC was designed. And I think, as far as on the coast, it, it would be more HV, not necessarily air conditioning.
Yeah.
But transfer, outside air filtration, ionization, those kinds of things. And that building does not lend itself to that. It was, you know, sometimes those wonderful new ideas go in the ashbin of history overturned, and that building gets very close to qualifying for that.
Yeah, it was a flash in the pan, but it was a concept.
Yeah, and if you absolutely fixed it, it's likely just as reasonable to replace.
And again, at some point, you start to do so much change, so much modernization to a building like that, and you might as well just build and rebuild, right? That's the, that's the price point that would be good, I think, for the board to see, right, in terms of the, the cost difference.
Yeah, and, and I think we do need to do that, because you, you hit a point where the modernization is sitting about seventy percent of the cost of new. It, it really generally makes no sense to, you know, modernize it. Because in this case, right, you have a building that's fifty years old. So your infrastructure on it's fifty years old and everything, you know, structurally is fifty years old. And, you know, do you want to put that kind of money into something that the, the core of it is that old? So this building, from our perspective, you know, I, I mean, we could do things and make the outsides look, you know, nicer. That's not really a concern. On inside, because of, this was the concept, late sixties, early seventies, open concept, they built all over the state of California. And we all found, you know, that that didn't, didn't work out real well for the educational model later on. So it's been, you know, had some work done within it. But I will say, right now, the biggest issue on this building is fire life safety, its exiting, its corridors. You have it, classrooms internally, no windows, and those that are on the exterior, a lack of windows. Not good for, you know, the teaching environment to be in, you know, cage-like type of spaces with the lower ceilings. And so those types of things really can't be solved. Some, yeah, the exiting stuff, we can, we can deal with in a mod. The exterior windows, the ceiling height, not going to really be able to increase that or in either case. We have block exterior walls, and we can't start putting openings in for windows. So there's a number of restrictions that this building has. And so that's definitely going to need to be a consideration if we look to do the modernization. Uh, and we'll run the numbers, trying to make this kind of equal and on par with other campuses, and we'll see where it lands.
Just one more quick question. Does the cost of rebuilding at Baywood, does, does that include the cost of demolition of the existing buildings and the refurbishing of fields? Turning, making sure that the fields are, will be run and?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mark?
Yeah, so this is a, this is one of our smallest sites, as far as I can tell. This is a very ambitious undertaking, and I'm not, it's not sent for again yet, but I'm concerned about where we're going to house a kindergarten when we're tearing that down. Where are we going to house, I'm just not seeing, even if we did it in phases, I'm just not seeing how we're going to house the population that's there.
Well, the beautiful thing with this campus is we would leave the current buildings where they're at while we construct the other classrooms up at the top, you know, only, well, you would lose this basketball courts, right, during that time. So that's, that's kind of why you'll see the layout the way it is. We're not, we're not proposing building a new campus on top of where the current campus is, specifically for that, for that reason. So again, this is just three kind of, again, concepts that, that Gary and Eric put together for us, right? Just for the board to kind of see, like, what, what could we do? What would it look like if we looked at that? So what we did was we talked about potentially turning the, the current multipurpose room, so the area that is now the cafeteria, turning that into the admin, you know, kind of office where you come in, right? So basically, the front of the campus then comes closer to that side. You know, it's, when Gary talked at the very beginning about the facility master plan and where we place buildings, the, the fact that the multipurpose room is built where it currently is, compared to where the current construction of the campus is, is problematic, right? Like, it was not put in the, like, I mean, in terms of, and correct me if I'm wrong, from an architectural standpoint, but having the multipurpose room so far from where the main office, you know, building is, is an issue, right?
I mean, it's not even, in addition to far, I mean, it's, it's up eight, nine feet, whatever.
Eighty-eight, essentially.
Yeah, because of the grade, so you have this long ramp, which needs some accessibility upgrades as well as the stairs. So anytime you're in your classroom and you need to go to the cafeteria, you've got to go up the ramp and up the stairs and back and forth, and it's not really a great setup.
So, so in this case, when, when looking at this again, so we wanted to reorientate the office to that corner, right? So again, you have kind of a flow of a campus, right? And, you know, you're going to fence it, you're going to lock it down, right, when people have that single entry point to a campus. So that's kind of what we talked about, was maybe re, redoing that, um, current building there, making the admin, moving the cafeteria to the back end, and then basically building the campus along the back where the current basketball courts are. There is a bit of a hill, like you'll see, where the Kinder Play area is, as well as amphitheater. So that's why those are kind of built in that way, right, because it is a hill. And then basically, you know, once that, the campus is completed, they move in, then you could actually demolish the actual, you know, current classroom building that's, that's there, right? You can make that the hardcore, so you could do some other things. So again, this is just one potential concept. Where is the multipurpose room in that scheme? So it's, it's, it's still, right where it is, right? So it's still the orange yard. That's where it currently is too. So we wouldn't move that building or change it, you know, it's a relatively newer building. So we would repurpose some of the areas for it, but, you know, we just add a, a little bit different flow. So the other thing that I'm going to have to work on with Gary too, as we move forward, is the addition of TK. So, you know, there, you know, full TK on this campus is going to be another two TK classes on this map. So those are things that we'll have to consider on all the sites as we move forward.
And the, the TK classes will require restrooms, like the Kinder classes, as well as, and then they would share, Baywood Chair, the Kinder Playground?
So we, yes, so we talked, and I talked to Gary, so there's different ways of doing it. So there are, you can get, they have modular buildings with restrooms inside, right, or, or stick-built classrooms with restrooms inside. But you just have to have restrooms adjacent to the building. So they have to be in close proximity now, for those. So if you, you did a restroom in between the four classes, right, that potentially worked, yeah.
It doesn't necessarily have to be in the actual classrooms, but it has to be in a near proximity.
It's nice. It's a, it's a huge plus trying to have that.
I want them in there so that I can monitor them better, but as long as it's within.
From the littles, I think it pretty much has to be.
So, yeah, yeah, because otherwise you're walking to the restroom every ten minutes when you have to go, right? Like, there's, there's some educational reasons why it's nice to have restrooms in those facilities. Mark?
Is there, is there any, is there any, is there, I mean, you may, just review for me, is there any chance that we're thinking of moving sixth grade back over here?
No, I mean, not, that hasn't been a conversation that's been talked about at all on the coast.
Okay.
If anything, we are going to talk about it in the city.
Right.
So again, this is just one concept, here was another potential concept. And these are things that I want the board to, by approving the facility master plan or moving it forward, it doesn't mean that this is what it's going to be, right? What we're saying is, hey, this is what, if we were to replace the buildings, this is what it could possibly look like, and has some costs associated with it. But once, if, if a bond was passed, if we had money that was prioritized for Baywood Elementary School, then you would actually hire an architect, they would design it, they would put all of this together, that would come to the board, get your input, get approved plans, right, to move forward. So there's a whole nother process, this is more, again, a concept of doing it. Mark?
Yeah, just, so you may have covered this, just refresh my mind. Are we going to lose any outdoor acreage or square footage, I guess, here?
Not, not, I mean, we're, not on this particular campus, no. I think we would just be replacing, you know, turning the current building into these new classrooms, and then we would turn that back into hardcore, so it would be relatively the same.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, so we actually did a couple of options with kind of a two-story building, especially with the slope, so something could be like, a little like Hawthorne, trying to take advantage of that hill and that slope better, because it's a little bit of a tight area. Mark has a question?
Yeah, I'm sorry, this is, this may be way off field, but the community uses our fields before, after school, on the weekends. In my mind, that's in lieu of a park? Is there any chance that we would reach out to the county and say, you know, we're really saving you having to build a park, can you share some joint use funds with us? Can you help redo these fields? Just, just a thought. No, I don't need an answer, I just laying it on the table.
Almost an impossibility, they're strapped for funds, so they rarely have. In my career, all these years, I've never gotten a penny out of a county or a city.
I do.
Okay.
When you're talking about just school facilities, are you tied to the same kind of restriction that you have with residential, where you have site to, building ratios that you have to maintain?
The state governs all school construction, and they're superior to city or county. So if you wanted to build a school in the middle of the estuary, what environmental concern, that's a poor choice. And, and the hills of McDonald Hill or whatever up there, you could do it without zoning. Because the needs of a school are superior state-wise to the zoning requirements of a city or county.
So we
To pecking order.
We are not held to a thirty percent building, seventy percent at all. We've structured the way it works best educationally for students.
And there's urban, and the state, at, at state level, there's all kind of considerations for urban settings and a total, totally different set of rules. And again, having nothing to do with, like, city of LA or, or county, only what the state requires. So, and then I want to point out one more thing. What, what this study really does is we're trying to get a handle on what is the size of the need as to what to do. And as Ryan pointed out, when it comes down to actually designing the site, there'd be tons of meetings with the site, there's going to be meetings with the board on what each individual campus actually, what we actually do. So, but it has to have legitimacy as to what is our, do we have a need? And I think that's the primary thing we're trying to establish.
Mark?
I'm, yeah, thanks. I'm, I'm, I'm sure you've heard, but there's all these water restrictions and sewer restrictions in Los Osos and Baywood. Are, are, are we going to run into any trouble? Are we going to be using less, I mean, I don't know. Are they going to have any say in this?
Well, fundamentally, would not really be increasing the size of the campus. We're just, in this case, you know, redistributing it in different locations. So really shouldn't have any additional water sewer needs for it. And if we've already got, we've already got that onsite, and we're just going to connect to it onsite, I, I don't really see how they'd even have to be involved.
Well, again, the, the state requirements for water usage take into account the local conditions. But our direction would come from the state of California. So as to like low-flow toilets and those kinds of things. If you ever got to the point where we had, well, so far it's not affected schools. You might get, like in Nepal, they have a twenty percent reduction in water, but it does not apply to the schools.
Okay, so then, just to be clear, construction is, is allowed or not allowed in, in Los Osos Bay with, based on, based on new construction?
Well, the answer
This is not residential, though, it's just re, rebuilding the school site, so it's different.
Schools are required to respond to local conditions, but we don't, we don't choose how many houses they build. We have to have classrooms ready if somebody does build a house. The regulatory environment is absolutely separate, is what I, what I'm saying, what I'm trying to say.
So in terms of the, the facility master plan too, and what I would tell the board is that the things that really stand out to me in terms of campuses, Baywood being one, Pacific Beach being two, I think the classrooms at Pacheco and Bishop's Peak, like those are, you know, just walking around campus, looking at, in, inside classrooms, those types of things, those are the ones that really, you know, stand out from a priority standpoint. So Baywood, you know, that's why we kind of looked at, again, initial conversations were the amount of money that it was going to take to modernize the, the current classroom building. And at the end, after you spent all that money, are you getting happy with it, right? Versus, do we want to look at a different site? Now again, at the end of the day, money may not be there, we may have to look at just doing modernization, those types of things. But from a facility master plan standpoint and concept, it made sense to potentially build a new, you know, new campus. So, so that's Baywood, so a big, big change, you know, in terms of potential. So, so after that, it gives you kind of that rating that, that Gary talked about, right? So everything from, again, your hazard, you know, the asbestos, you know, the structure itself, ADA, a roof, the envelope, you know, windows, again, does have an aesthetic as part of it, right? And, and so it, it gives kind of a priority. Now, we haven't finalized those priorities in terms of it, but, but definitely a lot of need at the Baywood campus.
Oh, the way the city is, you know, the ratings, one is, one is good, four is not. So like that main building is three point one average rating. So that's, you know, in the, the port of area four range. And it's substantially, I mean, it's even higher than the portals. So.
And so is newer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Wow.
Okay. So the cost, again, and, and so, again, like, like Ellen had asked, well, does this include the demo, the new asphalt, the new playground, you know, all those things, right? So it's all built into the budget. Now, what I would tell you in how we started this was, this is on the low end. I mean, if, if I, if you were to tell Gary, hey, if we're going to build a new elementary school today, what's a new elementary school cost on the campus?
Fifty million, probably.
Right? So, and, and these estimates, what you'll see with some of the classroom buildings that are in the facility master plan concept, those are modular classrooms. So stick-built is going to be more, right? End of the day, could we do a combination of the two? What does that look like, right? Those would be things that we would want to, you know, do some cost estimates, want to write down the costs for a footage.
Yeah, and even the modulars have a range depending on the type, right? So the ones in Delphi, Santa Fe, you know, pretty nice, right?
Which will seem nice, yeah.
And those are up, you know, you could do those today. And those are up, you know, you could do those today, they're about four fifty probably in square foot install. Uh, plus adding a fire alarm on top of it, so, but then, you know, there's others you can do that are much simpler than that, that are gonna be closer to the three fifty range. So we, we, that's kind of, we picked four hundred in the middle to see what direction you go, if it's stick frame, you're gonna be pushing the five fifty plus range.
Gary, differentiate square foot.
Yeah.
Differentiate for the board, the differences in the kind of construction, like a relocatable classroom as opposed to modular, as opposed to stick built, so that there's a real clarity.
Yeah, so we all know what a relocatable is, right, we see them with their little ramps and stuff, that are little, you know, twenty-four by forty with T one one siding on it and the flat roof, okay, that's as, you know, the cheapest classroom you can get. Uh, I think it's in the hundred fifty to hundred eighty dollars a square foot range. Um, as you move up from there, you you kind of take that concept and you start to customize it, they still come out with, you know, the floor, the walls, the roof, and they put them together, um you can do them with a flat roof, just put all, all together in one row, with the entrance that you come in at grade without ramps, with a concrete, you know, crawl space floor underneath it. Um, you can take those and put some sloped roofs on top of them, um which takes it up a little, little higher in cost, but now, you know, starts to make it look a little bit, you know, more customized. You can add stucco on the outsides of them, you can enhance the windows from the standard windows to something nicer. Um, so all these things can be added, then you get up to something like, you know, the, the clear story window concept at LG Santa Fe, they actually have, the same company has another version of that, that was called their daylight building, they have a called daylight junior, um that they've now come out with that's cheaper, and it's basically a one-way pitched roof that has the high clear story windows on one side. So we can look at all the options, all the costs, quite frankly, we're doing quite a bit of that, there's even some other stuff on the market these days. So there's a multitude of options from a modular perspective.
So do they have like a, a nighttime building?
A nighttime building?
It's a daylight.
Oh. Yeah, I think, I, I get, yeah, they call it daylight cuz of the clear story windows.
But the primary difference is that a modular manufactured building, you pour a regular foundation and bring in a pre-manufactured stick-built building to set on top of it, it's just manufactured offsite as opposed to onsite for a four and more.
Yeah, and then there's even a, a hybrid between the pieces that come out as, you know, the twelve-foot wide sections, um to what we call a modular that is a componentized modular, where they build walls and all these things in the factory, and they pour a slab onsite, and they put it together kind of like an erector set, there's a couple versions of that too.
So, so is anyone doing the kind of the stick-built building that we are familiar with, where people, you know, the local contractors come in and they do the building?
Yep.
Or do we have a estimate for any of that?
Um, not for classrooms, we just kind of went with the four hundred as a modular right now, we can certainly, you know, kind of put in addition or, you know, another line item for upgrade to that in our.
To stick built?
Yeah.
I'd like to see that.
A comparison.
We can do that, right.
Yeah.
Similar to what we did at the high school. We will be more.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, for sure, right.
Yeah, I think from the, you know, from a board standpoint, it's, you know, what I would envision is this gives you that general idea of kind of what the need is, right, then we ask the public what they're willing to support, right, and then if we're fortunate enough to pass a bond measure, you have a certain amount of funds. And I think at that point, then you, we start to have the priority discussion about, are we doing, you know, how much money are we gonna spend per site, right, based on these needs and what we know, and is it gonna be stick-built or modular, you know, I want you to actually go see what these look like. Cuz there's a variety of, you know, from your portable with the ramp to what Gary's saying, that you can't even tell, right, that they're not a stick-built, you know, building, so. Um, versus, you know, we, we know our mat building in San Luis Obispo High School, beautiful twelve-classroom stick-built building, right? So there's, you know, definitely some pluses of having, you know, nice facilities and and doing stick built as well, so you wanna look at all the different options, I would think, at that point.
And they generally, stick-built buildings generally have a longer lifespan, you know, than modulators. Um, you're also, you know, modulators come together, right, so there's a, there's joints in between them, so you, you know, there's upgrades that you get that will have the building last longer if you stick build it.
Good.
But I, I think what we're looking at today is just the general concept.
Concept, yeah.
Because I would just, you know, remind everybody to, if we get to the place where we actually decide to go out for a bond, we have to specify specifically, specify specifically, what is, what it is that we wanna spend money on, and we're gonna, that's what we're gonna spend money on, we can't spend it on anything else.
Yes.
So, you know, those be, those more detailed, gradual discussions will come later.
Yep.
Yes. And and just, Marilyn, to answer to your uh query early, earlier, we have, right at the last minute, said, okay, before we choose modular or manufactured offsite, let's look at a recent, and and Gary has done this with their, I've known with Gary and other districts, a sticked building, it's really, really simple, that you just built recently, look at the cost structure, and then get an actual, real-time comparison. And depending on what the economy's doing and the labor market, it sometimes is as inexpensive to do a more simple stick-built building than, or, you know, on par with modular, and we've seen that many times.
Yeah, and and I mean, that is a good point, the reality is too, is if, you know, we're building some new classrooms um on multiple sites, we could develop a single stick-built design that we could use at multiple sites, and uh there would be savings with that.
Yeah, I was hoping that you could just say, well, to go, uh, the cost for stick-built above modular is thirty percent, or something, you know, horseback, probably.
About thirty, thirty-five, yeah, probably.
Okay, I would just say that one consideration might be that if we're gonna pass a bond, we may need the odd, or our people who are gonna be paying for it, to know whether they're, you know, we're building it from something that's gonna be there forever or for a very long time, or it's gonna be stick-built, so I think that's something we have been deciding from.
Sure.
Well, it would absolutely be our goal to build stick-built, if we can.
Okay.
I think, Gary, would that be a fair characterization, if we can.
If you can.
We could raise the money.
You know, um, there's a lot, there's a lot of need, you know, you probably have so much money, so sometimes choices have to be made. And and maybe it is like a combination, maybe some sites, it's more modular and some sites, because of the use, you know, it's a stick-built.
So, Belby Santa Fe's the next site, um, that, again, that's included, you know, this gives you a good idea, you can see some of the pictures of kind of how beautiful those modular buildings are that we put on, and Belby Santa Fe, those daylight buildings that, that Gary talked about. Um, so for this campus, not, yeah, when, when we looked at it, again, this is the current use of the facility, right? So what's included in this, um, and again, you can kind of see really, you know, there's some modifications that were made in the main building. Um, really, what's, what's possibly needed over the next twenty years of Belby Santa Fe are this, is um the portable on the right-hand side of the eighty-seven, as well as the nineteen sixties portable that is their site techatorium that they have. And then potentially, um, their playground structure, which is the next one, and uh some fields possible, so those are just things that potentially could be done on this campus.
So, when we look at Belby Santa Fe, do we take into account that it's in the flood plain?
Yes.
Kind of what happens, what happens to them, it's, you know, global warming, climate change, sea level rise, uh, see, you know, San Luis Creek, may, maybe, maybe we'll actually have some rain, you know, how does, do we, I, I don't know if we take into consideration all that stuff, but I mean, that, that is.
No, I mean, you, you, any, yeah, any project that we do that's gonna go to DSA has to account for all the flood uh zones. So it will have to be taken into consideration.
And that's why all of these modular classrooms and the restroom building that were put in, which are deep, right, yeah.
Or, or, or. We need to find that.
It's interesting, cuz this area along the back, this, this is the flood area.
Really?
It's along the back, it's not even what you would think, with the creek, that would be, it's through this back area, where you see these line of trees.
It's not like, it's not there.
That's where, when they did the, you know, the flood survey and those types of things, that is the area, so would there be issues with these portals, most likely.
Okay.
Right, that, and that would have to be addressed in terms of, you know, if, if that work was done, if it was moved forward with.
Great, thank you.
So, but those are the things that um stood out for Belby Santa Fe, right, uh, but overall, that campus is looking fantastic, I mean, just from a general standpoint, the main building did get some upgrades, um, the new classrooms look fantastic, you know, the landscaping in the middle, and all those types of things, but there's still some need, right, so that main classroom building does have some older-looking rooms um that are tied to it, some landscaping around it, right? So the next one is, is Bishop's Peak, uh, I get some developer fees with the growth there, as well as Measure D. Uh, just made a huge upgrade to this campus, right, with the new multipurpose room, the new office building there, so this is the current use, right? That's tied to the facility. And then when we look at the actual building itself, really, the, the areas that stand out are these nineteen sixties core classrooms in the middle. So, I think you, you know, nineteen sixty doesn't seem that old, but it's, you know, they're going on sixty-two years now, right, so it's, um, you know, they're, the, and I would say that the nice part, what we've tried to tell people is that our custodians do a good job of keeping them clean and trying to keep our facilities as nice as possible, and that's why they last sixty, you know, five years, sixty-two years. Um, but at some point, it's just those, you know, there is a need to modernize, right, whether it's windows, doors, HVAC system, one of those types of things, so. Again, this just gives you a basic idea, you know, this kindergarten building was nineteen fifty-five, right? Some of those portables in the, you know, in the eighties are, they're, they're near the end of their life, we actually got rid of two of the oldest portables um that were on this campus, where the, the new kindergarten playground area was, um, two years ago.
Yeah, most portals are considered, twenty years is supposed to be their useful life.
Um, and so when you, when you look at the potential, again, concept for Bishop's Peak, the idea was to get rid of those portables, um, and whether we do a new modular classroom lane, the Kinder, Kinder TK TK restrooms, um as well as potentially moving the, it's kind of a disjointed campus, the way it is, right, you had T-10 on that back area up there, and what we found is that when we did the sidewalks, the it's one of those things that once you touch a building or a campus, you then, all the ADA comes into effect, right, so. Um, I think when we walked in with Gary, Gary was amazed that it even got through DSA, right, when they initially put those teach portals up in there, cuz it's a really sloping area along that to the back, so, you know, if we're gonna do some major upgrades, do some major changes, it makes sense to probably, you know, have a new classroom building there, get rid of those current portals that are there, and and just, you know, as we redo the campus. So this is, uh, and again, the orange color, so there's kind of a, a, you'll see the ledger down at the left, you know, yellow is light modernization, orange is moderate, and then red is major, so as you go through and you look, and then, of course, if it's white, there's really, you know, the multipurpose room, the new office, library, you know, there's no, there's, there's no need for any work in those areas, cuz it's new.
And blue is new.
Good, um, just a quick question is, I, I, I sort of remember both of those right there, and that, so the, the older classrooms on the Bishop's Peak, uh, that were, are beautiful and have these high ceilings and windows that are open, but their class is competing.
Beautiful windows.
Um, so is it, what, what are we doing about the uh PC area, is that, is it several solved, or we just rely on windows now, or?
No, and, and our kind would be that all the schools in the, in San Luis City area, does the heat would all get ACV.
Okay.
Yeah, that's pretty much something that we're just adding to all, all campuses.
Existing classrooms as well.
Yeah, but and that's what we did at San Luis Obispo. Yeah, Mark, go ahead.
Thanks, so, at this site, is, it's going all the way back to when my son was a kid, parking's been a major issue. Is there, is there nothing or any thought about improving parking here? Even if there was offsite parking that was dual, dual-purpose, kids during the day, parking in the evening?
So we have the parking that's over by the kindergarten park lot, and we, you know, we added that parking lot behind the multipurpose room. And by moving the office to where it is now, you know, that it definitely helps the, the bus drop-off, so they're not getting stuck on that, um, the city. I mean, there's nothing we can do about the, just the fact that that rose in the, in the middle of a neighborhood, right, and that'll always be an, an issue, but, but yeah, we have added park, we have added parking to that campus.
Right, sorry, yeah, it's not, I don't think it's showing here for me.
It, it doesn't, yeah. I think this is before they put the law in.
I think this is an old Google.
Yeah.
Right, right, this is an old Google shot, okay.
Mark, that site's also six point six acres, current standard for an elementary is ten acres, so if something has to go, it's gonna be, it's gonna be parking.
It, it's really scary, yeah, it's scary.
So again, you'll see the cost associated with those uh modernizations, and, and yeah, that's, you know, like normal classroom modernization, so whether it's Pacheco, um, Bishop's Peak, the Del Mar even, right, those, you know, we're talking about going in, you know, you're looking at flooring, you're looking at the, the walls themselves, right, adding the technology for new, you know, um, you know, the latest technology for TV's, right, we're looking at potentially new windows, we're looking at HVAC systems, new roofing inside, so, you know, all of those kind of surface area touches are part of some of these budgets that we're going through when we look at.
So I have just another quick comment, when I look at the pictures, for example, of, of Bishop's Peak, these pictures make it look like it is just superb. And I, 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 you know, when we go for a bond, I think maybe we need to just show some of the, and staff does a great job, that's why, but show some of the, either before afters around the district, or some of this just looks, you guys somehow share the, the fact that this is visually uh, too, too visual as well. I'm sure.
So these are some of those, these are some of those classroom pictures that were, and again, there's, yeah, the new multipurpose room, those are great, but when, you know, there's definitely, you know, when you, when you walk on campus, you can definitely tell the difference between the two. So CL Smith, right, new office, um, transformation there, new fencing around it, right, got a paint job, so um, on the surface, you know, the campus really, and and again, from the, from the front, really looks fantastic, right? Um, it's made some, you know, great upgrades, but this campus has a lot of portals on it as well, a lot of those, uh, you know, rooms twenty through twenty-four, twenty-eight through thirty there, um, as well as the, the center front rooms on the left-hand side, so it does, you know, there's definitely some needs. Uh, some of their, their buildings themselves, as you go through, you can look at some of the ages, right, the kindergarten building nineteen sixty-two, um, some of the classroom buildings themselves nineteen sixty-two, uh, there, there was some modifications in some of them, but, you know, these are still some sixty-seventies rooms that could use some, some modernization um inside, so. And then definitely looking at the modulators themselves, you know, at some point, again, in the next twenty years, we would wanna look at potentially replacing those. So not a, not a huge change, you know, in terms of this campus, a lot of yellow, right, a lot of light modernization needed throughout. And you'll see the blue, right, which is basically looking at the, you know, it, the long, long, long range, do we, you know, change those, those portable classrooms.
And you're gonna see a lot of reds, um, by multipurpose buildings, this is a small area, which is a kitchen. Um, most of the kitchens need a lot of work.
But, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, if, if you could help me understand, we now use a central kitchen and we're dropping off food, so when you talk about a lot of work, wh- what, can you just give me one example of what that might be?
Um, so, there are, yes, there are more serving kitchens, um, just the configuration of it, the um equipment we use for the serving, the floor finishes, um, all that.
Storage, just old.
Thank you.
Yeah. And, and we have Aaron Primer, who would love to do, you know, more and more scratch-baked and more things, you know, better for kids in the future too, so I'm sure Aaron's got lots of ideas of what we can do kitchen-wise. So again, on the exterior, the new paint job, the campus looks really good, right, but there's still some needs, uh, in terms of, you know, the interior of the campus, you know, whether it be paint, whether it be those finishes that we talked about. Uh, Del Mar, another, you know, again, beautiful campus from the outside, right, new paint job really makes a difference on the campus, we've seen.
Yep.
Um, you know, this campus in particular has a lot of safety needs in terms of fencing around the front, um, along the edge of the campus, right? Um, it, it also has a roll of portal modular classrooms, or portable classrooms out there now, um, some of its buildings, as we go through. Some of its buildings, as we go through, we'll see again, current layout of the, of the campus versus how old some of the buildings are. So a lot of the classrooms there, you know, 1961, right? So, you know, going on 60 some years, so it's, you know, it's, it's, it's probably time for new whiteboards and new wall finishes and ceiling upgrades, those painting inside, those types of things as we move forward.
But, yeah. But the fencing is to keep the public out or to keep the students in?
Yeah, so, you know, the resident went through all of our campuses and did the, you know, kind of maintaining the physical safety, security. So that was one of the, have that single point of entry into the office building for people, you know, once the school day starts, right? After school, you open it up, people exit, you know, before, but, but yeah, all of those, those types of ideas about safety have been integrated into these, the facility master plan.
But did you just say there is no fence now or not?
There is no fence around Del Mar.
Except, except a little bit along the, in the back, what I would call the north backside.
Yeah, along the playground area, yes, but nothing along the front of the campus.
Yeah, the thing about Del Mar is that that, that butts up against the park, the dog, the dog park right there too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So again, when we look at kind of the needs, so light modernization, it'll be a lot of areas, right? But definitely the, the classroom wings are a little bit more than light, they're orange, right? And then definitely like the restrooms, on both sides, you'll see those are in red, right? The sixes there, those are the restroom areas. You know, long-term in terms of those modulators along the side, you know, those would be definitely something we could look at doing, you know, especially with TK. You know, they have the kindergarten classrooms now, which is kind of that in the kindergarten area where we want to put some new, you know, modular classrooms with restrooms, those types of things for the new TK classes, you know, those would be something that could be added along that. I guess it would be the east side of the campus. But nothing really earth shattering, these would be potentially moving some over to the back end, over by the cafeteria as well, right? In terms of classroom use. You see the ratings, you get the budget based, based on those. And all the different factors that go into it, some pictures of Morrel Bay again. So Hawthorne, you know Hawthorne is a definitely an interesting site, one of our smaller campuses, right? From a landscape standpoint, right? In terms of size, definitely is, is in need of a paint job. I mean, it really, it's, it's due. I think we made a big difference, right, on that campus in terms of looking at it, you know? And then, and again, a lot of these campuses need roofs, you know, almost all, you know, a, a large majority of them need new fire alarm systems. And that could be, you know, $300,000, right, per campus. You know, the roof at Los Socials Middle School that we'll review is, you know, $5 million, right, to redo the entire roof. So these are made, you know, things that you don't necessarily think about as you go through it, right? And look at it, but they're, you know, these are needs, right? These campuses are, are aging, so. So, you know, this is, it's kind of one of those, again, this is kind of like Baywood, it's got a little bit of a funky setup inside the main building and all the little areas are in between, right? Openings and such, you know, do, how much do you change that, how much do you not, you know, we're, we're really very.
So, Ron, I have a question. What did you say the, at the typical size for an elementary school campus was?
About 10 acres or a little. CL Smith, I think, is 12 acres.
Hawthorne is 1.65?
No, something along that.
That's what it says.
That's what it says, but.
Which doesn't.
It's probably 10.65 or something, I don't think it's.
It's not that big.
It's small, but I don't, I don't think it's that small.
No, it's not that small.
Okay, yeah.
So we'll have to look, we'll have to look at that.
And remember this, someone said this should have draft written all over it, because on our.
No, no, I under, I understand, I just, you know, I haven't heard that.
That's why there's no parking lot, right?
Yes, no, it's probably street parking and, you know, but yes, no, it just sort of, I'm kind of keeping that in mind, that number in mind there, it's like.
Right, well, one of our sites is 6.6, the other's 12, so there's gonna be huge variation on parking and field area.
Right.
But definitely.
And based on student population, classroom size, you know.
And this is definitely a campus that we want to, we want to make sure that we're watching student population, you know, they don't have a lot of space to grow or say long-term, right? So those are things that, if boundary issues came up, before seeing increases in enrollment. And Hawthorne's been kind of a, you know, from a camp, it's really up and down. I mean, we'll get 60 kindergartens one year and then we'll get 40, it's, it's really, it's been kind of, you know, kind of different in, in terms of that campus. Mark?
Has there been, yeah, thanks, has there been any thought to not having two entrances, so a bus drop off? And we have a parent, if you could go down just, anyway, there's two, there's a parent drop off on one side. I mean, just, just seems like the admin and staff is gonna have to, it has to be monitoring two locations and also with bad people and trying to get on campuses.
I think they recently, they recently just changed that, right? They got a group from the city to change kind of the bus drop off.
On the backside now.
It's on the backside now, so.
Right, that's what.
Which is what the site wanted, I mean, that's what they asked for, so. Just in terms of the, the drop off aspect and how that worked for them. So again, these are, the, the main building here had some modernization, it looks like in 1998, but was built in 1962.
And, and just, just a reminder from, Maggie, thank you, we need to speak one at a time, otherwise the mics make everything sound jumbled. Okay, thank you.
So mostly light modernization on this campus, the, you know, cafeteria stands out. And then purple is, is kind of one of those, do, do we reconfigure some of the inside of the building there or not, right? I don't.
And we did show a bus drop off and a parking lot.
Which I don't, I, I don't, honestly, I, I think the site will probably want to keep the playground area versus having that, right? So, you know, but it's a, it's a, like, if you had one, we're gonna be, right? What, what could that look like? So again, some costs associated with that site.
I didn't see its number ringing.
What's that? It's small because the.
From one to four, I didn't see the 2.2.
Yeah, it's actually, actually not too bad.
Yeah.
Lot of, you know.
There was some modernization in 1998, I'm remembering that, that helped.
And, and the one building is from 98, so it, it's really much newer from that perspective.
But definitely needs a paint job.
Yep.
So then we have Los Rancho, same thing, some paint issues there. Current campus layout, really the kindergarten play, the kindergarten building is probably the oldest and, and, you know, in need of the, of the most work on this campus. Classrooms 13 to 21 along the back end, those are all portable classrooms, right? So we see the main, you know, library kind of building was in, in offices 72, the old kindergarten classrooms 64, and probably looks the, the worst, I would say, on campus, right? In terms of all the buildings there, and actually needs. You know, overall, this campus looks pretty good.
Would we? Sorry, would we get, would we get any pushback on modernizing or doing much work on this because of its location in the, in the flight path?
I mean, I don't think so.
No.
Nope. So there is some, you know, it, this is one too, that we looked at adding a little bit of some, some, you know, some shade structure landscaping in the middle. They have that gigantic, you know, blacktop area that gets really hot, you know, for most of the year that, you know. So those are just things that, we've heard a lot of complaints over the years from teachers and staff and parents and so on. So there's some things that maybe we could do in terms of landscaping, you know, helping that, that kind of middle area. Can you see the ratings? You know, kindergarten area stands out, right? Classrooms.
Is, is the current, is the, excuse me, is the current philosophy to have the point of entry more out to the street rather than dead center in the, of the?
Yeah, well, I, yeah, I mean.
Ideally, yes.
Ideally, yes, right? I mean, this campus, it does kind of lend itself, it needs fencing around the other areas, but, you know, the way the bus turn out is, it does, you know, I guess that, when you go on the campus, is there like a point where you know where the office is, I guess is the point, right? So is there kind of that intentional area where people go to check in? So I would say yes on that campus. So Monarch Grove, again, probably our newest campus, right, in the district. You know, this is a, again, a, a place where they've, I think they have an infrastructure in the ground actually to grow this campus in the future, right? Potentially, you know, it's, there's some roofing issues there, there's definitely some paint issues that would be nice to do. But overall, this is probably a campus that's in overall pretty good shape.
So if that roof is 30 years old, did I read right, 91, sounds about right?
So this is 93, it looks like 93, 93, 93, 93, so it's still 20.
I think it's still within the 93, yeah.
So, okay, so we're coming up on 30 years, 28 years, 30 years. Does anybody know what our old roofing spec was? I mean, did we, were those 30-year roofs?
It's tarred gravel and it lasts 30 years.
It varies on type of roof where we're at too.
You know, coastal.
Some of it's, you know, shingles, it varies.
Based on roof type.
So again, not, not a ton of changes, right? So just kind of light modernization touch, you know, in terms of some paint, things like that in this campus, not, not any huge things. There are some, you know, potential there for the, for the cafeteria, nothing shocking, you know, at Monarch Grove, which makes sense. Guys, this campus is still modern, yeah. So Pacheco, so this is one like, like we talked about, that really, I think from, from a need standpoint, those classroom buildings in particular are really getting aged. We did put carpet in them, you know, because we, again, it's, it's not that we don't do maintenance or, I mean, we do roofs off every year. We do multiple roofs and several roofs on these campuses have been done already, right? But in terms of looking at overall, doing huge projects and, and costs over the next 20, 30 years, these are things that will come up. But, you know, these classroom buildings, 48, 53, 48, I mean, so those are, you know, 80 years old, right? And, and they show it, so.
This was my husband, so I'm done.
So, so definitely, so when I talk about, you know, those kind of main campuses that really stand out for need, again, Bishop's Peak classrooms, Pacheco, something with Baywood, right? Just because of the interior issues on there, and PB, which we'll, we'll come up on. But yeah, definitely this campus, and this is one where we would have to probably bring in temporary portables, right? There, there are some issues on this campus in terms of, again, they're also, they have this beautiful, nice, big playground area. You know, of course, there's safety around the entire campus is a concern, right? But I would, I would want to also probably look at some aesthetic, you know, grass breaking up kind of that asphalt's right into the classrooms, you know, potentially in the future as well, as part of the plan. But you see a lot of red, a lot of red on this campus, right? As well as, you know, potentially replacing some of these portable classrooms on the back end.
Quite a bit of contrast between enrollment numbers and acreage or the site.
Yeah, that, I was just noticing that, they have a small amount of acreage and again, they don't have parking, it's all street parking.
You're 530 kids enrollment to three and a half acres.
Yeah.
Or I, what's CL Smith enrollment, right, do you know?
I would say it's 380 to 400 now.
For 12 acres.
Yeah.
So.
Some things to look at.
But, but that's part of, I think, with Baywood opening, you know, our goal has been to reduce Pacheco, because it was growing, you know, on 550, right? Like, so with Baywood down, keeping kids on the coast, right? Keeping the enrollment on the coast, and we're seeing kind of that Pacheco slowly drop, right? Because what we can't do is bring the kids back on the coast, have Pacheco grow, and then have no kindergarten set in there, right? Their school site, so it's, it's definitely a balance in terms of how many kids we allow on the campus. But yeah, definitely, you know, you just walk Pacheco, you can see the, right? Whether it's the restrooms, the buildings, the, and it's more than just paint. I mean, there's, there's windows, you know, cafeteria in the classrooms, and we, we're seeing, you know, there's definitely need for some major modernization there. Cinchimer recently got a paint job, looks great, right, from the outside. We just added fencing to this campus, so campus that we have added security fencing, Bishop's Peak, CL Smith just recently did Cinchimer. So we've been trying to knock off a campus each year as we move forward. So not, you know, not solely relying on passing the ball in the future, right? Trying to get things done. So this is the, again, when you look at kind of the, the current classrooms.
What's the size of that site that looks like it owns a lot of ground?
It said 16, it said 16.
Yeah, it's a big site.
16.
But you know, I, I, is it, is, is, is 16 right, or does that maybe include some of the stuff that's down there?
Yeah, I'm wondering.
Well, it also includes the parent drop off across the street, right? It's part of it.
Oh, oh, oh.
So it doesn't, I mean, honestly, that site doesn't feel huge.
It doesn't.
CL Smith has a really big field space, so which is nice for the campus, right? They do have that big field, but when you, when I walk Cinchimer, it doesn't feel like it's this gigantic, you know, campus of any, it feels kind of, seem kind of small on the back end.
Yes, it, it, does it feel as big as Monarch's, you know?
No, I mean, that's a mean, but.
It's what you trade, it's a trade off for being centrally located and having access all around it.
Mark?
A little off to school.
You're muted.
You're muted, Mark.
Somewhere, thank you guys, somewhere in my mind, do, do we own the land under the pool and the, and the baseball field? Or is that still to be owned?
We own all of Cinchimer Park.
Okay. So, so who maintains the, the pool, who pays for the pool and the, and the maintenance on the baseball field and all of that?
So we have a, we have a, I don't, I don't know how long the agreement is until I think 1930 or 2039, I think is, the city leases that for us. So they, they maintain all of those facilities, all of that ground.
Okay, so the.
And if we get a dollar, a dollar a year.
Excuse me?
What?
It's a dollar a year.
What? How much do they charge it? How much do they charge us to take care of our?
It's a long term lease, yeah.
Yeah, I appreciate that. How much do we pay them to take care of kids after school and, and after school programs and that kind of stuff?
We're not paying, we're not paying for that now, we did with COVID.
Okay, thanks.
We've been all subsidized. So, so the Cinchimer Building's 1954, right? So then again, those classroom buildings are, you know, they need some interior finishes, some, some things, right? And they were on 70 years, some of those.
Yeah.
So that's why there, you'll see those are.
I'll thank you not to be so dismissive, because that was the year I was born.
Sorry. Yes, so these are red. I'm not even gonna go there. So yeah, so they need to get some work done, right? As we, as we move forward, so definitely, you know, the, the classrooms here stand out in terms of maybe some more, you know, some higher level modernization as we go through those, right? Both windows and so on, you'll see some of the, and these are those classrooms that have a lot of the, the windows along, you know, almost all window walls and stuff that, those add up if you're gonna be replacing them.
Yeah, I, I, I would just say, I hope when we look at this, we do, because I, I love having the bright wind, you know, just the bright light and the classrooms are really nice and relaxing.
Yeah.
So like I talked about earlier, you know, teach is probably that area where if we did see an increase in enrollment in the city, that would be a campus for us to be able to expand. You know, I don't, I don't know if, and again, we're, we're just digging into this TK requirement, right? But long-term is, is teach, you know, is teach a school that takes on some of our seventh and eighth graders and becomes a 4-8, right? Because we're really, it's too big. Is, is teach a campus where we have all the TK classes there, and we have a TK campus, right along with the current teach classes that are there in, in the future, right? Like, those are all things that we could look at considering, right? As we look at facilities moving forward. But, you know, I, I think if anything, you know, as we've gone through this facility master plan and look at campuses, you know, there's definitely a long-term need. you know, there's definitely a long-term need for us to get rid of those portables that teachers are currently using. So they have the, you know, the six classroom portables along the back end. And so from a priority standpoint with the board, you know, is it, do we replace those and keep, keep teach in its current location? And continue to rent the campus to SLOCA? Or do we give the campus back to teach and not replace those portables and not spend money on that and look at a different direction? So those are all options, right, in terms of looking at this, this facility itself on that campus. Mark?
Yeah, is, is there, as we look at teach, is there, at some point, the philosophical discussion whether we, we still wanna support a, a teach-type school? Or is that just a given at this point?
I think it's pretty much a given at this point.
Or it's a different discussion?
A potato.
It's only a different discussion, it's on the master plan, yeah.
All right.
I don't know that we want to go into that one.
Hey, Ryan?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
And Ryan, curious, we have teach showing as being built in nineteen seventy-six, so was Old Pacheco built in nineteen seventy-six or was it built before that?
So this, these classrooms, when I look at this right now, we have the nineteen fifty-four buildings.
Right, I'm just saying, I'm looking at, I'm looking at the front, the, the introductory page. We have it being built in seventy-six, and I'm sure that Old Pacheco campus was built part of that.
Yeah.
So just something fifty-four on that.
Yeah. So, but, but again, I think that's the part of like with the facility masterplan, you know.
Right.
You're gonna put a lot of money into those new portables, right? And so in terms of, do you just, you know, does teach become a campus? Do they get their main office back? Do they get the multipurpose room? Do they have a library? Do they, you know, have those things, right, um, in the future, things for, for us to consider? Um, instead of having a parking lot in the middle of campus, does that become a blocked-up area, you know? Those types of things are things to consider. Ellen?
So this doesn't delineate, as I can, as I'm looking at it, I can't tell, um, the key part, okay. Oh, I see the one above does, shows Chris Jespersen, that are we, we're not responsible for Chris Jespersen?
No, we're not.
Right? Okay, so the, um, the site size, the eight acres, I'm just hung up now, I'm looking at all these on, on the big campus. That, how Chris Jespersen uses a portion, um, and then we, we could use all the rest, should we choose to?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, and if we choose to continue leasing some of it out, then we would make a decision as to whether to, um, touch those portions as well. So this is a sort of complicated site.
Yes.
Yeah.
Which requires a lot of, a lot of decisions.
Yes.
Actually, I, I think, don't we, I don't know if we own the Chris Jespersen building. If I thought we leased, we, or is it the land we leased to the County Office of Education? Because I know that, that this is like one of the original buildings.
I'll have to dive into one, but I'll have to look at that agreement again, but I'm pretty sure that we have no control over the Chris Jespersen.
Because I thought, I thought we did.
We do.
And, and I thought that, uh, it's actually one of the.
They paid, no, they paid for all the repairs.
Right.
But they're going by our guidelines.
They.
Working with them replacing floors.
Not C, not CCS, remember that?
No, CJ.
Not the CCS building in the back. We're talking about the big Chris Jespersen building.
So we own that building?
I don't know if we, well, I guess you guys will check that, but the county office, it was originally built in the forties, I think. Uh, that was the original, what was it? School for, um, several, that's what they called it, the original school for several halls, again, pretty much in California. Um, but.
When Russell?
The county, the county office, the county office runs the program. But I, I clearly remember us having a discussion at one point about a lease with the county office. And I remember it was for the building or for the land or for both.
And I, I, I'm pretty sure, because I remember looking at it, it's been years now since, because this is kind of before with the CCS building.
Right, that's.
But I'm pretty sure that when Russell Miller was the, the CDO, that there was some state funding to build this building, right? And so we basically dedicated the land to them. And whether it's a hundred-year lease type of thing or something, I'll have to find out for sure. But I'm pretty sure that they, like, that's not a building that we can take back.
Right.
So the state funds are spent on those types of things. So it, it would be something that the county would have to, like, like the county is doing in a lot of different school districts, honestly, as they've gotten rid of their special education programs, they've given those sites back to the, to the school districts in those areas. I know that's happening in Lucamar, it's happening in Zascara, it's happening in Paso. Um, and it's actually a facility that we asked them about getting, taking back, and they weren't willing to give it to us, um, yet.
See, Mark has his handbook.
Yeah, thanks. Ryan, um, to the left of the property, and when it's configured this way, is a piece of Cal Poly. Um, not dedicated, not paid for, it, this, this is a walkway? Are we taught, when we fence this, are we talking about fencing off?
It is fenced off.
It is?
Yeah, it is fenced off. So kids walk through, they, they walk that way, and we do it so that they don't come on campus? Because we have major, you know, kids walking right through the middle of campus all the time.
Right.
So that's, that is completely closed off, and so students can walk along that path and not get on campus.
And, and you're saying now it's, it's fenced off?
It is fenced off now, yes. We did that, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
So again, it's, you know, some older, the teacher's old, it's kind of like CL Smith, right? It's kind of that same classroom layout, makeup, you know, the glass in the windows, so on, so, um, definitely just depends on kind of what the board wants to do in terms of that, that campus and, and moving forward with it. And those, those portables definitely are, you know, at, at some point, we have to make a decision what, what, what we're gonna do there. So our, our two middle schools, um, you know, the, the more I walk around them, the more I see them, the more the need pops out of both, right? I think, um, we're both going to handle loans, you're gonna see some big dollars, some big prices, right? You know, the whole parapet around loans, the roof itself, right? Um, you know, these campuses need paint. Um, not that, not that they're in horrible shape, but there's definitely some, you know, there's, there's need, there's modernization need through them. Now, we'll tell you the one thing we did at, at Laguna as a potential for the future, and again, these, you know, most of the building's nineteen seventy, right? So going on fifty years. But we did add some concepts in terms of looking at, you know, if, if all of a sudden we had a lot of growth in the city, you know, we are gonna have to address the, the need of TK in San Luis Obispo and the city schools, right? Um, and, and where are those classrooms gonna be and how we're gonna accommodate them in our current school site? So, um, does that, does that necessitate, kind of like with the coast, do we move sixth grade and have a six, seven angle Laguna? Um, a potential future conversation, yes?
Yeah, so I guess, and I'm just one person, but I would, I would ask it among my colleagues here, if anyone would be interested in seeing kind of a second view of this that would include sixth grade? What that would do to this campus, what that would look like?
So what's on here? We, we included it.
Okay, so, um, oh, I missed it, I'm just, I didn't understand.
Yeah, it's, it's blue, Ellen.
Uh, U-shaped, uh.
Oh, okay, so.
We're talking.
Oh, I was just looking at blue, like, um, you know, the color, color thing, I'm just, okay.
So, so we looked at the potential of a sixth-grade classroom lane there. We looked at also the potential of adding a full-size gym on the campus if you brought sixth grade on. Um, again, it's a concept, it's an idea. Would it be nice to have, right? Doesn't mean that at the end of the day, you only have three hundred million dollars, not four fifty, and you wouldn't build a gym, right? But where would that go? What would it look like?
Right, the other piece that would follow up on that is, um, if we were to move sixth grade to Laguna, isn't that going, are, are we going to have, um, and again, if it's addressed, I'm sorry, I was just looking at it as, at the existing campus? Would it, um, we're gonna have traffic issues and, um, other things with this city and neighborhoods? I would think that, that, I don't know what those costs look like, if we had to change the entrance or stoplights or that kind of thing, so.
Well, I think, you know, another, to, to your point also, another thing that, that has concerned me about Laguna is it's, it's, it's a little lake, you know, but it's a location on the side of town where the growth isn't likely to occur. And in order for, you know, for everybody on the east side of the freeway to get to it, they've gotta cross either Madonna, but they've gotta cross Los Socios Valley Road, you know? And I guess maybe, maybe, um, uh, or the, the, the road that they're gonna build the new off-ramp, um, problem. But it's, it's gonna be difficult to get to, if there's growth, you know, I think that's a consideration. And then you're right about already, Los Socios Valley Road is already jammed in the morning from people coming from the east to the school. You know, it's only for, probably for twenty minutes, but it's still, it's pretty, it's pretty congested there.
So there are some considerations over on the, on the, um, I guess would be the, you know, the, the field size, the west side, you know, in terms of that campus, that you could add another potential parking lot, parent drop-off there, right? We actually talked about putting this, the sixth-grade campus over on that side, keeping it almost as like a separate sixth-grade campus from the rest of the campus. So there's, there's definitely options where you could maybe alleviate some of that traffic, so it doesn't all have to go through that one street, one parking lot. That you could have, you know, have, have an additional drop-off, potential parking lot in the back. Mark?
Yeah, so Ryan, in, somewhere in the back of my mind, and I could have the wrong school district, I, I, I thought that we, when, when, it's either Del Mar or here, when they built the school and the playground, that they actually put the infrastructure in underneath? Portables on, so right where the sixth grade wing?
Monarch Grove, Monarch Grove.
Okay, thank you.
So, so the other, you know, again, so this was just a couple of different examples that you could do. So you could add a new sixth-grade wing towards the back, behind the library area there. You could also take the current multipurpose room, we can figure that into a sixth-grade wing, um. So th- these, these are just a couple of different potential concepts, right, whether that even happens or not. But definitely the need, I would say, you know, there is some, again, there's some, this is not just yellow, this is a little bit more orange, right? In terms of some of the, some of the need for modernization within those classrooms and those, those buildings on that campus.
Ryan?
Yeah?
Can I ask if we definitely research into what the success of, uh, six through nine, um, for middle school versus what we have now? Um, do, do we know, just in terms of what the success rate is of students that go through one kind of program versus the other? Is it, does it benefit our students who seem to be growing up more quickly than we perhaps like them to? But does it benefit those students to have more acceleration and be in more of a middle school environment? Or do we find that it's better for them to stay in the more elementary school?
Well, I know Dr. Pedro will have a strong view about six, seven, eight. I don't know about ninth, I don't know that I've seen too many sixth through ninth grade campuses throughout the state or what that looks like, Gary might.
I had done a sixth through ninth.
Yeah, so I, to me, that's a little more rare side.
It's old school, yeah.
And ninth grade is considered high school, so.
They used to have ninth grade campuses, I know, like, yeah, they actually had a ninth grade campus in Lucamar along, you know?
It did, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Back in the day, one, one year, kids went there for one year, yeah.
Yeah, just one, yeah, yeah, there's a few districts I know that had that.
So kind of an interesting dynamic, saving them, right, from the, from all the bad things that happen to them when they go to high school, I guess, but, um, but again, as you walk around Laguna, you'll, you'll, you can see the need, right? It just kind of stands out, again, the roofs, the parapet areas, um, you know, the current gyms are just kind of small, right? Inside, you know, in terms of if you're having a big event, those types of things, um, some of the classrooms. So that, you know, definitely something that if we look at, you know, the potential of sixth grade is something we definitely wanna, from a facility masterplan, parking, we do wanna look at that, right, as, as a possibility. Um, Los Socios Middle School, you know, with loans, if, you know, we talked about earlier, having that entry point to a campus. Like, where do you go, right? What's the entry point? So I think this is one where we might wanna look at changing the entry point to more over by the parking lot side. Instead of where the current office is now, maybe turn that into classrooms, turn like the band room or that side, um, of campus into the actual office building, you know, put the fencing around it, close it off, right? It, it just makes more sense where you do, you're, you're, you're driving there and you drop off, that, that, it seems like that would be the place to go, right? But this is definitely campus that lacks that entry kind of place feel, right, from the architect's standpoint. So this is the current layout of the building, and again, this is a campus in particular that needs a lot of roofing. Um, and it would be nice to do the parapet areas as we did. It's a, it's a funky campus, and then you have these two huge levels, right? The bottom fields and tennis courts, you have this big, huge walkway that goes up, right? Um, we have done the, the playground, we have done the asphalt around the campus. Um, so you, you'll, you know, you kind of, kind of see the, the different areas, different times that they're built, so seventy-seven, seventy-eight.
I think there might be a mistake here, too. I think the library building was part of measure eight.
I think that shows the ninety-nine.
Ninety-nine. I'm looking at Los Socios Middle School, it says twelve thousand eight hundred and forty-seven square feet, built in ninety-seven?
No, that's not the library. Library's on the back, that's the office that you're looking at. That's the office at multipurpose rooms in case you.
Why, I'm, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
No, it's okay. So the, the, the library was the thirteen thousand to forty-six, nineteen ninety-nine.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, right, I'm sorry.
Yeah. So again, you have some red area there, potentially, right? Um, so we talked about too, you know, right now, they have the sixth grades currently in those modular, the portable classrooms on the left. You know, to, you, you're gonna have a new gym, potentially Laguna, or do you put one at Looms, right? And this is a tougher one, right, in terms of where you put a full-size gym? Um, so do you take the old gym and turn that into a sixth-grade wing and build a new gym over where the bus drop-off is? You know, where those current classrooms are, could be a parking lot area? You know, so there's all kinds of different options long-term of what will work. But this just gives a general idea of, you know, in terms of putting some new classrooms in, replacing those modulators. Um, and then, you know, potentially changing some of the layouts, so.
So are, are the current gyms at, of an adequate size for middle school sports?
I, I mean, there's not a lot of room for people, I, I mean, they, they work, they're okay. There are smaller, um, sized basketball courts, and there's just not a lot of spectators, right, in those. Do they work? Yes, they work. Would it be nice to have a bigger gym that you could hold more people and have a bigger floor and have multiple teams at the same time, those types of things? Yeah, that would be great, right? But, so again, that's gonna be the need versus want conversation at the end of the day, about what's prioritized, where, where money goes, right? And so for me, it should go to roofs and, you know, some of those needs, right?
Yeah, I don't know that they're all about.
But long-term, if there was things that came up, let's say there was a joint use, um, funds that came forward to build a gym and a, you know, on the coast or something the state passed or things, you know, if we were gonna do something like that, I think from Gary's standpoint, it's good to kind of show where this would be, right? So don't build a new classroom structure in that place potentially if you might build a gym there someday, right? Those are the things, just things to think about. And by putting this all in here does not mean we're doing it in heaven, right? This is just the concept from that to what it could be.
Okay, so Ryan, my understanding, my understanding was, if I'm talking to you yesterday and, or emailing yesterday and today, was that you will be looking for approval, or the board's okay for like proposed site one or site two or for the location of classrooms? And, and just recently, I've heard a shift in your, in, it, it, this is to give you an idea of what could be done. So I'm not sure what we're doing other than reviewing the need, or are we actually reviewing the proposed new site?
It's probably a little bit of both, but yeah. I mean, I guess there, if we go through this and we look at the sites, are there sites or things that you right now are just going, absolutely not? That, you know, we're, I wanna go a different realm, right, to let us know. You know, of everything we've gone through so far, do things really stand out as things that we, we should not be placing on the master plan or that we should change? I, I did hear the modernization of Baywood versus the new campus, definitely including the modernization look, instead of a, a new campus on the back.
Yeah. That's a really big ticket item, so.
Yeah.
That's something.
Yeah.
I personally would be interested in seeing the modernization costs, um.
For sure.
Against.
Stilt-built, stilt-built as well. Stilt, stilted as well versus module.
Yeah.
But all the other campuses thus far, I mean, we really haven't made too many major changes to the campus themselves, right? To the layout or, or how they go. You know, the addition of the sixth grade at Laguna is something that we definitely want to look at. I think Ellen's point about the parking and, um, you know, drop off areas is something I need to work with here and consider. Um, I think we need to have the TK discussion as well, right, as we, we finish this up, um. But definitely not, you know, nothing too shocking in terms of LOMs, the gym, right? If, if, again, I think that's more of a stretch long-term in terms of that. But we definitely want to look at the modular classrooms that are out there, the portables, right, long-term. And over the next twenty years, we're gonna have to do something about those, whether, whether we just replace them in kind or, you know, we do something else.
I think when we initially established that program of sixth grade at the middle school, it was comforting for parents to know that there would be, that their kids would be segregated and then, you know, with periods of integration. Uh, I, I don't know now that people have kind of gotten used to the idea that sixth grade is at the middle school, if that separation is still something parents desire.
I, I honestly think too that there's a, that there's enough empty classrooms on that campus now that we could potentially look and integrate in those sixth grades into actually the main building. I don't know that we even need those modules long-term. Um, but that was something that we look at with the movement and where that would go. Mark?
Yep, Ryan, so when we, so when we did the ma- measure D, I can't remember measure A accurately, but when we did measure D, we, we put a pretty good emphasis on the playfields and, you know, the swimming pools. And I think that that probably was something that helped the public understand the need, but also helped the public accept because those were areas that they got to use um a lot. So I would like to just put a, 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 a sort of plug in or have more discussion about a, a full-size gym that, um, at both, um, at both middle schools, especially in Los Osos, because out there, we, that gym's probably the only, would be the only full-size facility. And I think it might get a lot of use from the community as well. I don't, I don't, there was some, you know, that's iffy and I just like to sort of keep it a little better than iffy. Just one board member.
So the, the two comprehensive high schools, there's not, you know, there's still, even with measure D's done, there's, there's always going to be things over the next twenty years that we should look at doing, right, on the campuses. Um, and so, you know, again, you can see Moro Bay itself, right? Large site again for a school of eight hundred kids. Um, but, you know, you've got your two softball fields, your two baseball fields, just like Slow High, you've got your track, you've got your field. You know, those are just comparable facilities that all high schools have, whether you have eight hundred kids or sixteen hundred kids. Um, and so when we go through, again, a lot of, a lot of, you'll see the modernization, right? A lot of twenty-twenty-two, a lot of things completed to date. Um, but in terms of just the needs there still, so, um, it, it's, you know, probably more the exterior of the gym itself and the, the weight room and the resting, you know, resting area, the outside a little bit. Um, you know, long-term, that side, we're already looking at having to redo the, the lights, the stadium lights at Moro Bay, just because they're just corroded, it's time. So like we're doing at Slow High or the field, we're looking at those right now and putting together some proposals for, for the lighting on that campus. Um, you know, they, they want to add beach volleyball areas on both campuses, right? That's a new sport that CIF is going and there's a lot of kids asking about and pushing for. So those are things to consider in the future as well. Um, but, but not a lot, right? Not a lot of changes, you know, a little bit of love for the ag area, I would say. Um, even though we have, we cleaned it up and fixed it, um, but the potential of adding another building out there, new greenhouses, you know, for that facility would be nice, but you'll also see a lot, you know, just a lot of light. Things are.
You know, I think if we went forward for a bond and we included high school improvements, a lot of people would be saying, what the hell? Because that's how we sold measure D. So I, I personally speaking, I would not include any high school improvements. Uh, that beach.
Yeah, excluding that.
Excluding that beach.
Well, you can, you can make a footnote though and not obligate yourself. I mean, what you actually promise in the bond language, the language they vote on, is very, very general. So the caution is how you promise publicly and advertise and brochures. If you're very, very careful, you're not being dishonest, you're just keeping up with needs. So I mean, like, there were things that we did in measure D that probably weren't advertised, pretty sure.
Well, if you did keep them to yourself, and I think that, um, I think that whether, however it was expressed, there was a sentiment in the community that this was for high school renovations.
Absolutely. But.
And I think we do the same this time. It's gonna be elementary, middle school focused.
Yes.
It doesn't mean that there's not a project or two.
Do something about schools, but, but not to, I wouldn't get a motive in any way.
It'll be very minor, right? Absolutely, the focus of this, and you can, and I'm not, I mean, this is what the facility master plan is pointing out, right? It's our elementary and middle schools that need to work and, and Pacific Beach High. The high schools, they're almost all white, they look great, right? We're, we're in much better shape in terms of where we were, you know, moving forward. So yeah, are there little things that might come up at our two comprehensive high schools that may need to, you know, our new phones or things like that that happen? Yeah, but overall, the push is gonna be elementary, middle school, definitely, right? And I would say Pack Beach sits next side. Um, so this is one, Mark, that ties into that conversation, right? And though we're not talking about what we're doing with surplus properties or those types of things, um, but this is definitely a facility that's been a conversation piece, right, uh, over the past. Um, you know, we've talked about things like, hey, we should move Pack Beach up to the district office, right? They could, um, take advantage of some of the CTE classes, those types of things on the campus. But, you know, when you talk to the kids, when you talk to Chris Dowler, when you talk to, um, the teachers there, they, there's always this sentiment that they want their own place. They don't want to be part of Slow High, they don't want to be part of Moro Bay High, they want to be Pack Beach. Um, and so with that thought in mind, when we looked at, you know, the potential of changing this campus, um, we did look at, you know, we basically rebuilding a new Pack Beach, right? A new campus for them on that same facility, um. So yes, their quantum huts that are classrooms are nineteen thirty-eight, right? Nineteen thirty-eight built, um, so, I mean, we're talking, you know, some, some old time.
Old barracks, what you're talking about, thirty-eight.
Yeah, so those, you know, those are old and, and have we painted them, put some stucco over them and put a little lipstick on them? Yes, we have, right? And, and they're surviving, kids are thriving and we, and we did, we fixed up the interior classrooms recently and gave them the furniture just to kind of get through this time period, but, but there's a lot of need, right, in terms of this facility. So we did look at, you know, if we did something on this campus, there's really two, two parts that we could do. Um, one would be to put the campus at the back, right? Um, and again, we looked at having the classrooms, you know, the, the classrooms that they have for, for the site, having an administration and a cafeteria, that's one thing that they lack. You know, some type of a cafeteria space for them. Um, that, you know, the, the CTE aspect, having some type of a CTE classroom building for, for them. It could be culinary, you know? One of the things that, when we looked at all the sites, that is something to consider would be, do we, do we move the current kitchen facility off of Laguna and build it on this site to open up space for sixth grade, let's say, at Laguna? Or something like that, right? Instead of building a new building, so, um, and then do the, does PB, does that become part of their CTE component for the campus, right? Um, do they tie into that? We, we currently have some P, we have five Pacific Beach kids working right now in our cafeteria because of the need for employees. Um, and it's, it's been a hit, it's been great. The kids love it, it's really tied in. And so we haven't designed the kitchen facility in the master plan, but it's just a thought, right? It's a, and I, a potential idea in the future that, that, um, we could consider. And so this is, there's one of two in terms of this potential site plan. Um, and then we'll go to Mark. I just want to share the other site plan, and that's basically putting the site where the current vicinity is, keeping the, the current, um, grass area field where it is currently and having middle school entry into the back point. Now, you could take the whole front of that campus, once this campus is built, get rid of those quantum huts, the buildings there, and you could develop that. You could have a developer come in and develop that front of the campus, right, in some way. So it's just, again, goals of the district. Are we focused on the school itself and what the school could bring? Or do we want to look at development opportunities? Those would be choices that the board could make. Mark?
Yeah, thanks. So I know, I, I know that we did, I'm not sure what the right term is, we did a value, we had somebody tell us what Sunnyside.
You did appraisal, probably.
Yeah, appraisal. Um, I, I understand that Sunnyside is, we were told five million dollars. Um, I'm just wondering if the board would be interested in having appraisal on this site? And here's my, what's the appraisal on this site?
Chris is gonna pull it up for us.
Okay, great. Yeah.
Ryan, one thing about this site is that the community does use, um, the fields next to it.
Yes.
Yeah, the, the field to the, I guess it would be sort of northwest. Um, and, and I think the community would have a lot to say about how we develop this property based on that. And then the prepared programs would move, obviously.
Is it, I'm sorry, Chris, would you mind if I just finish my thought? Is that okay?
I thought you were done, Mark, I thought you were waiting.
No, no, I was wait, there was, I, I asked about valuation, but i- i- in my mind, this is probably one of the most valuable pieces of property. I don't know what the appraisal was and what it was based on, and I.
Seven million, Mark, seven million.
Th- this is probably worth a lot more than seven million. And here's my thinking is, when you have an intersection like this, where there's a Costco, a Home Depot, a Target, and then a blank corner, there's, there are people that are gonna want this so much to, to complete that whole four-point type marketing. Um, I hear what you're saying, Chris, about, um, community use, but I'm also hearing when I, when it was mentioned at other sites, it was not, it wasn't that big a deal. Um, and I, I totally think that if we're gonna be the people providing parks for the city, that that city's gonna need to start working with us on that. And that's another discussion and it, and it could, and it could be hard, but it's a discussion that I think is gonna need to happen. I appreciate that PB wants its own location. I, I do feel that there are several places that could occur on property that we already own. Specifically, the Slow Junior High site where the DO is right now. And that is a separate location, it has a separate field, it has a separate, uh, multipurpose room, it has a separate kitchen, and there could be a fence if you wanted between the two pieces of property. But it's, it's definitely has the feel of a separate location. So then the question is what to do with the DO? You have five million dollars at Sunnyside, the DO does not need to be on school district or school site approved property. There's commercial property throughout the city right now that would be large enough both for the DO and, and a central kitchen. And I just, just urges to think down, down the road. When I did some research for the strategic plan, when we were talking about going through twenty-thirty, continuation schools was one of the ones that's, they're gonna boom in the near future, according to everybody that I read. And so I just, I just caution tying this piece of property up when in the future we may need it um, as a, as a, as a resource. And, um, I appreciate the, using the front of it, but I don't think that's enough for a major developer. There's just so much potential, so I, I just caution about just thinking, this is a school site, this is a school site, this is a school site, and look at, look at some of the property in a more entrepreneurial way. Just my two cents.
Ellen, thank you. Um, yeah, I have no issue with, I suppose, looking at things in an entrepreneurial sense, but our job is to provide educational opportunities. And I, I really like the idea of thinking about, I think, I think of this a little similarly to how we were discussing teach a little. It's a sort of, we need to have a separate, almost philosophical discussion about what we want to do for our kids. I mean, I'm attracted to the idea of the central kitchen here. I really want to honor and respect that, that these students want a separate campus, that it's important to them. Um, and I like the idea of, you know, figuring out ways to take in um, advantage of the proximity to those other retail establishments, but not in a way that necessarily means getting rid of this property, I'm not ready to visit that at this time. So I'm really, I think that's a board discussion around a lot of things other than, um, they, they definitely need better facilities than they have. It's just, you know, like everywhere, all our students, um, they, they have arguably the least attractive, least usable, least modern facilities of any campus in our district. And, um, that's, we, that needs to be changed. So I would suggest we, you know, kind of have this, hold this and maybe teach and have a basket with sixth grade at Laguna, uh, teach and this in terms of, you know, we need to look at what's a bit, what we could do, and I appreciate doing that to see what, what the campus could look like. Um, I think that's important, but these encompass larger issues, I don't know if this is agreeable.
Can I say something?
Any more?
Well, uh, I don't know that this issue has been considered, but the location of, um, Pack Beach is in a highly commercialized area. I know there've been a lot of theft at Target and, uh, there's a lot of unhoused people. That's the new word for homeless, I understand, um, that are living, wandering the area. I just know that because I had friends who were renting in the Madonna near Los Osos Valley Road area. And there was just a big problem with having people enter on and trespassing on their property and even coming up to the door. So given that, I liked having the, on the map, um, the new consideration of having the neighborhood entry for, on the number four playfield area that from the other street over there, the other, I forget the name of it, yeah, that street. And because it would seem more protective for, for the students.
Agreed.
Yeah.
We're getting close. So definitely limited. So again, San Francisco High School, you know, really the, the five hundred wing and the, uh, the music choir room is really the only area that's kind of untouched, you know, in terms of long-term. That campus is, is gonna be great, right? And, you know, with the dates and modernization, so, um, you know, nothing, you know, there's not a lot that stands out on this campus. Like, like we said, most of this campus is done, this and Moro Bay, right? So there's some lipstick things we can do with five hundred, you know, classroom eyes and, you know, this campus isn't gonna take much, just like Moro Bay. The focus is elementary middle schools. Um. We have added the district office in this, you know, that was something that we completely left out of measure D. We have to just picture this, I don't. Um, district office facility, so we have, uh, you know, currently we, and so Chris, you had a great question about the pair program. I think that's something we should, you know, that's a conversation made. Where is it best built in? Is it our, one of our comprehensive high schools? Is it staying at our PB? Um, is it, you know, does that become part of the CTE program for kids to work? You know, the prepared parent educators, does it become, you know, housing?
If I, if I.
This is our adults, our, our eighteen to twenty-two, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, uh, special education students.
So it lefts the district office where it was for so long and it moved down to the, to the vicinity?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, he has a few, now three portals there that they're utilizing. And he does a lot of workplace work, taking kids out to jobs, doing things like that, right? They have lockers doing so, so it's, it's been a real productive thing for the kids. Uh, we have moved the, a lot of preschool, special education preschool classes up to the district office. So that did happen and tried to make the connection with the, the current parent participation, doing some, you know, some integration with the kids and those programs, which has been great. Um, but it's, you know, there, there's a lot of between fiscal, HR, superintendent's office. But it's, you know, there's a lot of, between fiscal, HR, superintendent's office, adult education, right? And so that was another thing, maybe adult education moving to the teach campus. Into the teach office, is that a better location for them, right? In terms of facilities and use-wise, or utilizing more of those spaces? So there's just a lot, you know, if, if we decided to not lease the property and take it back and have Teach have it, there's lots of good things we might want to look into on a district perspective. You'll see a lot of, there's a lot of need on this campus, right? The old junior high, nineteen fifty, nineteen fifty-three. Honestly, I think, you know, besides the restroom areas, we could do, it's, it's just kind of some light modernization, right? If we kept the district office staff there. You know, it's, it's some paint, it's windows, some basic things, right? A lot of the roofs have been done, canopies have been redone. So there's not a lot of, a lot of money that needs to be put into the district office facilities.
So is the talk about developing this part of this property, at least for housing, completely off the table?
In terms of, like, demolishing it and putting housing up?
Well, no, remember, we had those long discussions about using the undeveloped area, the parking lot for, for housing, probably ten years ago.
Yeah.
Are you up for that again?
Well, I'm just curious. I wanted to ask if it's off, if it's off the table or. Yeah, whatever, whatever it's still available for, but I still wanted to.
We spend a long time. And then the neighbors just.
I think, if I can, I, I, I think, I think we're often forgetting, and I'm not sure. We lost some administrators this year because they couldn't afford housing. We lost staff this year because they couldn't afford housing. When we originally discussed this property for housing, we talked about pretty high-end stuff. And I don't remember the neighborhood coming up that being that upset, so maybe I'm just wrong.
Yeah, there's initial conversations had, giving six to seven lots, right? Like, it was a different conversation then. And then the conversation turns, and again, before I took the position to, to do like a big, huge apartment building and it had an underground garage, right? And so when, when, when I first took this job and I dug into that, that was a venture that we were moving forward on that was almost impossible to build, construct, and pay for. You know, the cost of underground garage, and there's, there's like major water that goes right through that property underneath that grounds.
Oh, really?
So the thought of building an underground garage during, in an aquifer was, was, was potentially a huge issue. Now, Mark, could you do some, you know, minimum spacing lots? You know, housing or something like that on that property, potentially, yes, right? But that's, that's kind of less facility master plan, more surplus property, probably conversation that we should, we will, we can keep separate. But again, I don't see us with this next bond measure making major, spending major money on the district office.
Too much spending taxpayer money to get a better administration building.
No, right, focus is on.
There is never going to be a time.
Focus is on elementary and middle schools, yes.
Administrative.
Yes.
Well, there's never a good time to bring that to the public.
Yes.
I mean, the hue and cry are.
So, agreed, we get it. So then we have our last facility, which is BGT right here. You know, we've done a kind of a basic.
Such liners there, always.
Yeah, water, that's your problem.
They are liners.
Done a lot of work, right? And then when you drive up, does it look like the ugliest building you're gonna walk into ever, right? And, and man, is it, it's amazing what you can do non-DSA to a building. I'm just saying, like, it's amazing, like, you have to understand, I mean, once you get DSA involved and, and, you know, from a non-kids' side, you can do a lot of things that make things look really good. But once you go down that road of state architecture, you know, what you have to do, the cost just skyrocket, right? And that's just what, it's what happens. And so, you know, there, again, these are, these are things that would be great to have. Would we do them or not, long-term with the bond, you know? We'll, we'll see. Would it be nice to park our buses under some, you know, under some of these canopies that could be solar canopies, right, long-term? Or do something like that, yeah, right? There's some things that we could potentially look at that would actually be cost savings. And even though we fixed up the front of this building and it looks really nice, you know, the back end wall with our other bus buildings, they're, you know, they're pretty sketchy in terms of that, right? So, you know, these, these are more just kind of some covered potential canopies for buses. And then getting rid of some of the modulators they have there. Do you do another kind of, you know, shop building, right, large shop building in the back? And get rid of those modular kind of, you know, buildings that they have. But that's basically what this looks at. Mark?
Yeah, thanks. So again, I just like to talk about, if we're talking about a main kitchen, and maybe we're talking about moving a DO, and we've got the MNO, all of these types of facilities at one location, I think would be beneficial. And again, this would free up a location that's potentially for staff housing. So I just want to throw out a little bit of different thought.
I just, I just have to laugh. One thing that just cracks me up is when you talk about state architecture. You know, and doesn't that sound ominous? It is.
Gary has to deal with them, because it is pretty ominous, right? There's a lot to it, so. And again, there's different levels of what can be done. So in, in terms of, you know, especially space like this where it's not kid-focused. And so the last one that I'll, we'll go through, there's two more sites, and these are two unused sites. So, you know, part of what we've talked about before under surplus property is like, okay, so if we hold on to these facilities, like, what's that gonna cost us long-term, right? You know, just to maintain, you know, as you, as you take in, you know, a hundred thousand dollars a year, what's the price tag of these buildings long-term? And I think that's the part where, you know, when we met with a group out at Moro Bay, I think Ellen was there, right? How do you know what it's gonna cost? What do you mean it's gonna cost millions of dollars to do it? So it's nice to have something like this facility master plan point to. Well, well, here you go. This is what it's gonna cost, right, in terms of long-term. So in some ways, they're, they're assets for the school district in terms of from a property standpoint. But from an actual facility and using the facilities that are there, it's, they're kind of a loser, right? Just in, in, you know, what they are currently in their current state and what it's gonna cost to maintain them. I mean, to me, asking, asking the, the public to pay for unused school sites to fix it, I mean, that to me would seem like a loser, right? In terms of moving forward, so. I'm not saying that we even.
We've already agreed that our return on invest, on potential investment in, in maintenance, it's not.
It doesn't matter at all. It doesn't matter. So again, these are the, these are the facilities themselves, right? Currently, you see some of the ages of the buildings, right? Forty-eight, fifty, fifty-one, nineteen thirty-three, right? You know, probably part of the problem now is we waited so long, now they've become, you know, antique. Historical buildings, right? So there's, there's a balance in all things as we move forward. But the point of this is really, you know, there's major modernization that's needed in, in a lot of these. And so I think for, for the board to know that, you know, long-term, we're looking at, you know, close to, did we fix, did we fix this one on this?
Nine hundred and twenty.
Do we have, so this is more of an, because we had more, or more, more.
There's a title.
So twenty-eight million?
Yeah.
At Moro Well? And if we go through, we do the same, you know, getting the classrooms, the, I mean, they're, they're, it's just old, right? Sunnyside as well. And, and we've done some modernizing, like, we put new asphalt, we've done the things, and even we fixed the sewer at Moro Well, because you, you have to have a sewer that works, right? I mean, there's some things that we had to do from a safety, just having, you know, the facility at all, right? But putting long-term money into Moro Well and Sunnyside, again, fifty-four, sixty-seven, fifty-four. And, and as you can see, the site's almost all red, right? So major modernization needed throughout those buildings and classrooms. Lot of threes, nothing to the four, right, major modernization aspect.
I think this is the highest-scoring one.
And so the price tag, price tag of this site, twenty-six million, long-term modernization, so.
And the appraisal on this site was?
Four point six million, I believe. And so that, so, again, those are, it was good to hear from, hear the board, kind of hear you go through. So like I said, some of the things you pointed out, things that, well, get back together with Gary and address the TK, the parking lot at Laguna, the Baywood aspects of it. You know, definitely things for us to, you know, as, as we put this together, we, we add the enrollment information, which we can bring back to you and share that we'll look at. Mark?
Yeah, I just, I just want to piggyback on what Chris said. We also have to be careful of how we think about this in Moro Well, because it has playfields that the community uses a lot.
Agreed. And Sunnyside. So, any other questions from the board?
Yeah, just, just one. So Ryan, when, when are you gonna try and wrap or hurt us into some kind of more cohesive comments? When, when do you need a sort of?
We probably have, I mean, you know, it'll probably be a couple of months, I would say. So maybe we'll venture back, you know, especially once we get the information. I want to give Gary plenty of time to go through, get the involvement information, you know, add those items that we talked about. So we actually have another item.
Yes, we do. Website design, website redevelopment presentation. And that would be Jeremy and Mandy. Thanks for all, by the way, thanks for all the, you guys, this was really instructive. I feel like learned really a lot there. Believe me, we know a lot about schools now. You know where the bodies are buried. Okay, Mandy, Jeremy, welcome.
Thank you for having us. It's, I remember going to Los Franchos and going to school there when that, those new buildings were being built, so. It was exciting to see. So with that being said, Manny, I'm gonna, everybody, I'm gonna share my screen today. I will guide us through just what the new website is starting to shape up and look like. Now, with that being said, everybody, this is, I'm gonna use the term pre-alpha event. So don't get too excited. We're showing you kind of like the beginning of what it looks like. And then, hold on one second, I gotta be able to see everybody if they're raising their hand and they have questions. So with that being said, we have a, we've worked for months tirelessly with the redevelopment team. Manny has done a great job kind of guiding the team, leading the team, doing the training. Jessica Mueller over there has done an incredible job as well. And I really want to call them out for just all of the hard work on top of the day-to-day responsibilities and, and the fun that's going on right now. So with that being said, let's, let's, let's take it away. The vision and the focus has been, let's, let's make this simple. As you know, and I'm gonna bring up our old website, this is our old website. One of the first things we can see is there's a lot of clutter, there's a lot of words, there's just a lot. The term I'm gonna use is a lot. And what happens with websites, and it's not just particularly us, is that websites seem to add more information with time, and nobody ever takes stuff off the website. You know what I mean? So we have to do the spring cleaning, we have to do the pruning, and we have to do the refreshing. And so just take a quick second, look at, you know, what this website looks like. And something I want to point out is the CVRA. Like, the only way I can find it personally speaking right now is right here on this little panel that kind of slides through. So it's really hard to navigate our website. It's really confusing, at least on the district side, to find the information you need. Yeah, you can get some good stuff like job opportunities and bowling and stuff right there. But it's, it's not very functional for today's day and age. So with that being said, here's what the new website is starting to look like. We're gonna start with, you know, just a fresh look at the buildings that we have, that we built. I know Mark brought up just a little bit ago about the before and after for Measure D. I'm, I'm going to address that. I have your pictures on the new website, Mark, as you brought that up. So with that being said, just kind of scrolling down, as you scroll down, you can see all the new events and links, and they pop out. We have our calendar right here as well. And because it's, this is the district site, you're gonna see primarily just the board meetings right here under your calendar. Because, well, that's the board right there. Give me a second, Mark, please. And I'll bring it up.
I'm sorry, I don't think I can see the, the page. It looks like I'm seeing it in thirds. That's my only, my only question.
Okay. Can everybody see it fine now as well? How about the board?
I'm not sure. I'm not sure what I'm looking at.
Hey Manny, do you see it fine? Just chime in real quick.
I do, but I think what the issue is, is that the page doesn't look the way that our current page looks with the above-the-fold information and below-the-fold information. Final site really worked with us on developing a page that interacts with the current demographic of parents and students. And one of the things they said is that we scroll Instagram, TikTok, Facebook, everybody scrolls. So you're going to scroll on this page.
Thank you, Manny. Thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Yeah, so as I scroll down, I'll say it that way. So we have our calendar here, what's going on with the district calendar. And mainly the district calendar is board, is board meetings, as you can see right here. And then we have our board meeting agenda, COVID information, communications. As you can see, we scroll. We have a little cool motion with Moro Rock right here. I'm gonna go quick, I'm gonna go quick, because we got a lot, so I apologize. As we continue to scroll down, our guiding principles, you hover over it, it shows what our guiding principles are, right? Just even down in here, kind of gives you that fresh feel and that look, right? These are all pictures that were taken at our sites as well. These are our students, our staff. So you can see it all right here, culture, safety, keep scrolling down. And then we have our videos. We have the welcome back by Dr. Prater video and, and all sorts of that stuff right in there. So that's really kind of the, the basis of our front page right here. Then what's really cool is, is now we go into what we're about, right? So we have the Board of Trustees. We click in here to just look at it really quick. So we have, you know, the agenda, the budget, the policies, all of that stuff. The CVRA is, I don't know if you saw that, is right here, the very top, so we could see it really quickly. I know that, that was something I brought up that was hard to find. You can find it very quickly right here. Manny added that page. And it's very easy for our district staff to add pages, which was very hard for us in the old system. And if you keep scrolling down, you see all the beautiful pictures right here. And say you want to reach out to Mark Buckman, for example, you can quickly click here. There's, there's his contact information. As he waves everybody off, I encourage you to reach out to him. And here's his quick bio as well. And the same with Missy Dobler Drew, here's her bio. Yeah. So definitely, definitely, we've been working hard. A lot of it right now is just to continue getting content in. You know, for us, it's, it's, the hard part is getting the content. We did not want to bring old content in. We wanted to make sure whatever we bought in was, was clean, fresh, that it, we just didn't forklift the old stuff and put it into a new frame, that we took a good look at it, made sure that it was still relevant and that we needed it. So here's our academics, or everything we do with academics, for example. Here's bilingual education, who we talk about. Go ahead.
Yeah, just real quick, I did want to highlight on the about page under this board. Just the district strategic, strategic direction of twenty-one, twenty-two. So now if you click on that, this gives, this is all that information that, and all that work that you guys did over the last spring and early summer, including the download for the documents. And then if you do click on our, our, the CVRA page, you'll see that it's much easier to navigate than the current Google Doc.
So down here, as you can see. And then we have these tabs, which shows the meetings and dates. It links back to all of our YouTube videos and stuff that we've made as well. So thank you, Manny. Manny, anytime, jump right on in. And let's go from there. Here's our iInnovate as well. And so I wanted to show just so we can display just how cool our iInnovate is. And then if I click this link, it'll take me off into the foundations iInnovate page as well. And the other thing I wanted to bring up is our website was so clunky, the old one, that we forgot to add really important stuff. And so one of the things that I really like that our district does is the student senate. And we totally did not have anything mentioned, our student senate on her, on any of our websites. So you'll see as I go through on the school site, so we added the student senate in, it's there. And so, yeah, just bring it out here. I'll do a little plug and you all can see my little face right here. So here's the district sites where we quickly talk. So here's the district sites where we quickly talk about what our department does. Our bio is about ourselves and the pictures. And then, you know, support communications. And then, you know, if a student doesn't have a device and/or internet access, we talk about that right there and how they can get it at the school sites. Feel free to go through this as well. I'm jumping really quick. I'm going to jump really quick into Measure D as well, just to talk about something Mark had brought up during the meeting about Measure D was the different projects. So we can click on different, we can go through the different projects. And Manny, I seem to be missing, oh, here it is, right here, projects. So I'm going to go to Slow High, because I was checking that out just a little bit ago.
Jeremy?
Yes, go ahead.
Go back to the very first image that you see when you open this from just, go one more, please.
I'm going to, I'm going to go back.
Okay.
And remember, this is beta, so we got some stuff we need to fix here. You know what I mean? Like this needs to disappear.
That was what I think. It just, the one that looked very foreboding. And I just wanted to find out if we can lighten that up. But there was an image that came out that was kind of grim, came to me, not that.
So we have to be very careful with our pictures. As Manny and I found out that it, we have to show like, what is it, Manny? High context, like?
Right, high, the images have to contrast a lot. It helps with our visually impaired users. So we have a lot of our images may appear dark, but it's because they're in high contrast.
I see, thank you.
Yeah, so we're kind of stuck to, to that and it's understandable, you know? So let me go here, back to Slow High. This is something Mark brought up in the last meeting and I wanted to quickly show. Here's all the completed projects for Measure D that we're adding in. So for example, here's the tennis courts, before, after. You know what I mean? So we could show just what it looks like, the before, you know, the after with the building. There's a whole bunch of other pictures as well that were taken. You see?
Actually, Mark Buckman is going to meet me next week.
Yep.
And we're going to do a lot of, you know, a lot of new, the new latest photos of the science rooms and those types of things that we can add on to this now, especially projects.
So there you go. I, I just heard that mentioned in the meeting. Another really cool thing is what's called Find It Fast. And so maybe you don't want to go through a whole website, but you want to find something super quick. So we have to find it fast. Oops, and this is, as you can see, we're still in the beta on some of this. Let me go back to the main district website. Please bear with me here. Right here, so Find It Fast. And here's our Find It Fast kind of menu items. For example, here's Aries. So if a parent wants to get to Aries really quick, we have it broken down. So community resources, parent resources and staff quickly. So these are just the quick things that we know that, you know, people within our community or like our staff use and they need to find it really quick. And they don't have to go look searching through our website to find it. So everything from transportation, lunch menus, calendars, communications with parent square to Aries and whatnot as well. So the Find It Fast is really nice and it's on every single website that we have. So I'm going to quickly jump into, move off the district website. I'm going to jump into an elementary school. So I'm going to choose CL Smith today. CL Smith is a great example. So we have just about, you know, staff, parent square, Aries, bell schedule, enrollment. We keep it really simple for that, for the elementary site, parent resources, and then academics as well. Academics, we're going to continue to build out, but academics links back to our district website where it talks about all the different bilingual CTE instructional services and stuff like that that we have. And remember, there's a lot of stuff that we can do, but we're trying to at least get the website up. And then as, as more ideas come in, we've been queuing them. And then we're, we just want to get the site going and then we'll make those changes. This is, will be a living document. And as you can see, we also have the, the foundation link right there on the header. So we've kept the, the elementary sites really kind of basic and simple. And, and you'll see that the secondary sites are, are far more complex. So I'm going to jump all the way over to Laguna Middle School right now. And yes, we do have a slight issue over here. If you look with Laguna Middle School and about kind of smashing each other, we get that. That's something we're going to address with the designers. But what we really liked is the about the academics, student life. So students know what to expect when they're going to school at Laguna. And then also student services as well. So attendance, counseling, health services, we're adding safety in as well. You'll see it at, at Moro Bay High School when I bring that one up. And another one that we liked was the transition to high school. So we could show like Lamb's is for your plans, the Slow High registration, and then always athletics. Mark, go ahead, buddy.
Sorry, did, in line of other things that have happened in the district, is there a quick link to WeTip somewhere?
Yeah, so it's in safety. So here, here, I'll go over to Slow High. I, like I said, I have to add it in, but there is a quick link to it.
Yeah, if you got, got it, it's all good.
Yeah, let me show you Moro Bay. Moro Bay is really like the prime, we're almost there kind of thing with Moro Bay. And Moro Bay is a huge site. You have to understand it's, there's a lot going on at the secondary sites to add in. So here's your about page and all your dropdowns. And you can see it's running into Moro Bay High School itself. So it creates issues when I bring it up. So here's like academics, so here's all the departments, right? So we could jump in and see, for example, just like art or whatnot. Here's student life. So all the different things students can do. And you can see in here that we even talk about the superintendent, student senate, ASP. We talk about all the different clubs, library, yearbook, student services. And Mark, this is what you were looking for just now. We brought it, we put in safety right here. So when you click into safety, we have the text to tip and then we have the report of concern. So we found that a lot of, at a lot of the secondary sites, students are big into texting tips. And so we put that front center. If you want to report a concern, then it takes you to the report the concern page moving forward. And then we have our athletics boosters and then once again, continued with the foundation.
So just to jump in real quick, Jeremy, one of the things that we did do is if you go under academics.
Yeah.
Yeah, just real quick, just to show, let's do math, mathematics.
There it is. Thank you.
Okay, and you'll see on the right-hand side that, so we'll have course descriptions on the left-hand side. So if you click on like, for instance, pre-calculus or one of them, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so it has the course code, the grade level. This is basically their student handbook, their course handbook, that they're going to have, be able to access online. So if you have a parent, you know, your first child is going into high school and you're really curious about what these different classes are, what prerequisites they may have, they can easily go there. And then on the right-hand side, all of the department staff, all the teachers are listed with their subjects as well as whether or not they're part of a club, that there is advisor or if they're a coach. That's all listed there as well to give students and parents an idea of who's at each school, especially our new staff, I'm sorry, our new parents.
Thank you, Manny. Anything else, Manny, you'd like to add?
Nope, you're doing great.
Okay. Well, how about this? I'll open it up for questions from the board and then if anybody has any questions. And realize we're working real hard to get this website up and going as quickly as possible. But we want to, like you saw, we're missing some areas like safety consistently through and then alignment issues that we're, we're going to address with the designers.
For Jeremy, I just wanted to really thank you for the, wait a second. Thank you for the CVRA piece. I had a call from a, a community member yesterday and she went, and I spent about fifteen minutes looking for the maps. And then I called Mandy and Mandy kind of walked me through it. But even with the two of us doing it together, it took a while. So it was, I'm, Andy can attest to my feeling lost now with just slowly meandering through the website for quite a lengthy period of time before I was able to, to get the information that the community, the community member had already tried to find them herself and was unable to. And so it took, it took three of us to find the maps. So I really appreciate that.
Yeah, and I feel like you shouldn't have a degree in graphical design to figure out our website. And so like, and it's, it, you have to understand with Final Site, they are K-12 centric, like web design and hosting company. The big thing that they're like in on is that they really, really won't teach you to fish. They're not doing any of this. Like it is really the, the, the heavy lifting of the redevelopment team who's done this. They've set the framework up for us, but all these new pages, the look, the feel, the layout has been really, really done by the redevelopment team. And so what's really nice about that is that now we have a staff of people that know exactly how to build pages, how to put them in. So if we have to be agile for some other COVID reason or some new CVRA that's out there in the future, we know how to make those changes to our website and make it easy for people to find it as well. So, and Eve, I saw your hand up.
Yeah, I love this stuff in-house, so thanks.
Before, before we go on, I see that we have a member of the public that would like to address Selena, your hand up, I believe?
Yes, I think it looks amazing. I just had a quick question for under academics. Is that where you'll be putting the accelerated math pathways? Because that was also something that was really hard to find. Just, as we all know, that math is particularly important as kids progress beyond secondary into, to college. And whether a kid has accelerated math in, in middle school or not, they could still get to the advanced math if they take summer school or double up or et cetera. So that was something that Tristan had worked on, I think like two years, twenty, twenty, yeah, two years ago. And it was always really hard to find. So if that was something that can be built into the academics. And then the second question with updating the content, is that going to be the responsibility of the school site? Or is that going to be district office driven? I only ask because my husband was responsible for his cap polychemistry department updates. And, and so I just didn't know who was responsible for updating the actual content on a yearly basis.
Okay. Am I allowed to answer? I, I, I don't mind answering. The, so we've been talking about specifically how to update. First of all, the accelerated math, I'm going to have to check in with instructional directors and see where we can put, put that in within, on the website. I don't have the answer for you in that regard. When it comes to updating the website, Manny and I have been speaking, have been talking about how to update it, because our, our fear is it's hard. Updating is a double-edged sword and the reality is you get inconsistency with people that have not been trained. And so we want to make sure that the people are trained to do it correctly. And we have a big team of people that we are training to do it correctly and that they can take ownership and update it as well. And then Manny was talking about having a review committee to make sure that it falls within our standards of design. So we don't get back to where we were, where one school site looks completely different than another school site. So it creates inconsistency for parents and that's our fear. All right. Chris, back to you.
Other, other questions from the board members?
Yeah, if I could, Jeremy, what I didn't see, and I'm sure it's there, but is links to PTA Boosters Club, is that, is that pretty logical?
Right here's boosters. If you look right here on, for Moro Bay, there's the boosters link right at the very top banner.
And, and then PTA is?
PTA is on the very top banner as well.
Thank you very much.
I have, I have a question. I love the, there's a lot of competition and noise. What's that? I, oh, well. So I love that what you did with the rock, Moro Rock. What, what's all that noise? Okay, and a lot of beauty in the rock. You know, the crown jewel as far as nature goes of our whole area. And I love, is there a way to make that? And with that, that motion of the water, that's so cool. And it looks so cutting edge as far as websites go, you know? A lot of them have the parallax motion going on. And I understand that would be hard for a team of people to update if they're not trained specifically as programmers. However, is there a way to have this be some, somewhat of a default picture? Because it's such a magnificent piece of work there by, by nature.
You know, I'd have to, I'd have to talk to Final Site. They're the ones that actually came up with this concept and implemented it. It's, I don't even know how this works, to be straight with you, Eve. It's a cool, it's a cool effect. I do agree with you. So, but yeah, I don't know how to replicate this. They definitely do.
Well, just, it's just a question.
No, okay. No, but I like it too as well, so.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions from board members?
Oh, one last thing, because I know this is going to be on everybody's topic. Right down here in the lower corner, on the right-hand side, we have language. We can add more languages, but right now we have English and Spanish and it automatically translates it over to Spanish as well. So just be aware of that as we get through the different pages. It's on every site that it automatically translates to Spanish as well. So just be aware of that as we, we move through. We have the English, Spanish. Go ahead, Mark.
Just a huge kudos again. I mean, Jeremy kind of, you know, I know, thanked Mandy and Jessica and, I mean, the site secretaries.
Yep.
Through Mandy's and the IT tutelage, right? This was a big thing to take on over the past couple of months. And they have spent eighteen hours doing this. So, I mean, they literally went through their own tutorial training, each of the secretaries and Mandy and Jessica that they had to go through to even start this, right? So they literally have become experts in putting this together. So I just, again, huge kudos to our site secretaries, to Mandy, to the IT team, Jessica for, and Val for putting this together.
Thanks. So it's two o'clock. We've got a long and productive meeting. Thank you, everybody. Just an announcement for those of you who are here. I will not be at the, probably not be at the meeting on the nineteenth, although I may be available for a short period of time during closed session.